Well, you know. Great, great.
That's exactly. It was, it was, and because of basically what I've been telling them. So, that's what I've been doing, but my thing is if I can pick it up and get the red line of somebody. Yes, exactly, yeah, that's true. So, that's basically, that's, that's basically.
Pastor Councilman?
How you doing, Terrence?
Yeah, good.
I understand we've got a CDC meeting this Thursday.
I did.
Uh, is that, um, I've got a couple of questions, and I'd like to talk to somebody for these.
Oh, really? At work or in the district? Yeah, oh, okay. Wow.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, let's call this meeting of your Pontiac City Council to order. First item of business is the invocation, we give the floor to Councilman Parker to welcome this evening's guest to deliver the invocation.
Thank you, Brother President, I would like to introduce to you Pastor Rodney Talbert of the Liberty Missionary Baptist Church, he will be giving our invitation this evening.
Let us pray. O heavenly Father, we come today, and we thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for watching over us throughout this week, and Father, now we ask you to look upon our mayor, and bless him. Look upon our deputy mayor, bless him as well. Look upon our city council members, our president, our president pro tem, and all of our city council members as they try to guide us through the right way to work in this city. But Father, it is important that we contact you, listen to you, believe in you, and we ask you, Father, to bless this city of Pontiac. Bless everyone that is here, bless those that are watching online, bless everyone right now. But Father, I ask you now, that you bring unity upon our city, strengthen us in a mighty way, lift us up in a mighty way, watch over us in a mighty way. And give us your grace and your mercy through all that we go through, because we need you right now, not just today, but for the days to come. And we'll be careful to give your name the praise, the honor, and the glory, and Jesus Christ, we pray, and for his sake, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for a moment of silence, you'll see names identified, those that we know that we've lost in our community in recent days. Fran Amos, who was a Oakland County Commissioner and a state representative, her father, a Greek-American family owned a diner at the corner of Oakland and Johnson Streets. Timothy Bedford, Marguerite Dixon Hessler, she was 101 years young, she was in the World War II when Pontiac was part of the arsenal of democracy, she was a foundry worker here in Pontiac. Robert, sometimes went by Bob Dustman, he was the news director for W P O N, when you remember that Pontiac had a radio station broadcasting from our downtown, later he was communications director for Oakland County. Victorina Gonzalez, just 36, Perry Hardeman, Jordan Harris Jr., Kevin Hatter, Elton Hill, Julius Hollis, Joseph Herner, Richard Kelyak, Karayanak, Linda Cassat, Meg Love, Gloria Moreno Fink, Salika Montgomery, Ella Mae Murphy, Jessie Purnell, Peggy Sharon Culver, Alvin Strickland, Joyce Thomas, and Paris Watkins, just 29 years old, if you could join us for a moment of silence. Thank you very much, you may be seated, of course, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman. James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford. Mr. President, you have a call.
Thank you, I'd like a motion to excuse Councilman Mikhail Goodman for personal reasons.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved by Parker, seconded by Nicholson, that Councilman Nicholson be excused.
Goodman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Goodman shall be excused, he is in Washington DC today at the White House, on the lawn of the White House, representing the city of Pontiac and the state of Michigan. Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption of the motion to authorize the excusal of Councilman Mikhail Goodman from this meeting for personal reasons.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries, is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Support.
So move.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Nicholson, that motion is before us, could I please have a motion to amend the agenda to add subcommittee reports after the resolution honoring Team Pontiac's Special Olympics basketball success, but before the discussion items, and also making a correction under Communications Number 23. The next planning commission is August 3rd, that is a typo, and that is my error, and then Pro Tem Carrington saw that in one of them, it said long chair concert series, I had a spelling error, so wherever.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, so eighteen, we'd correct the spelling, so it's lawn chair concert series to match the others. So, adding subcommittee reports and making the date and spelling corrections under Communications. It's moved by Parker, is there a second, it's been seconded by Nicholson, any discussion on that motion to amend? Hearing none, roll call and adoption of that amendment to the agenda, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries, we are now at the main motion, approval of the agenda as amended, want to apologize for those omissions and errors on my part, but I want to share for the community's benefit, next week we will have a special presentation focusing on the restoration operating millage from the Pontiac School District, so that way the community has more information, thank you to those that submitted requests for that. And that is a non-homestead millage proposal, meaning not impacting those whose primary residence is, so just wanted to share that information. Any further discussion on the motion before us, which is adoption of the amend, of the amended agenda? Hearing no further discussion, I do want to recognize Councilman Melanie Rutherford as present and voting at 6:09 PM, roll call on approval of the agenda as amended, Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Goodman, I mean Carrington.
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I made the motion, support.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Nicholson, it is not a debatable motion, so we move into roll call on adoption, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, we are now at our special presentation, I want to give the floor to President Pro Tem William A. Carrington. He has authored a resolution that after the special presentation, we will vote to formalize, I want to thank Legislative Council Monique Sharp for assisting the city council in compiling and preparing those copies that could be shared with the members of that team and their coaches, so with that, President Pro Tem Carrington, let's hear the background.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis, it's always an honor to actually congratulate this particular team, Team Pontiac, Special Olympics team. They are a six-time Michigan champion, they are also, they won the gold medal nationally twice, and they continue to just be phenomenal when it comes to playing basketball and being ambassadors for the city of Pontiac. It's just, it's an honor, I'm gonna say this, I've been watching this team for probably seven, eight years now, it's an honor to watch them play. And I wish we can add some of them to some other leagues in our community, because they are that good, they are that good, even, even with a few different situations where it holds them back a little bit, but definitely, they, they're some excellent athletes and ambassadors. So, can I read it, resolution now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Pontiac City Council Resolution Honoring Team Pontiac's Special Olympics Basketball Success. Whereas, it is fitting that members of this Pontiac City Council and administration should salute those athletes who through their extraordinary efforts have distinguished themselves as true champions of whom we all can be proud of. And whereas, the members of Team Pontiac, Team Michigan Special Olympics Basketball Team and their coaches have proven themselves to be the fierce competitors, and as such deserving of the highest regard, as they recently won their second silver medal, June 10th, 2022, in the US National Special Olympic Games Basketball Tournament. And whereas, the members of Team Pontiac, Team Michigan Special Olympics Basketball Team are the current six-time state of Michigan champions in an eight-year span. Whereas the Team Pontiac, Team Michigan Special Olympics Basketball Team players are Nate Perkins, Fimera Colazo, Marquise Easton, Deonte Giles, Anthony Jasper, Rasheen Hatton, Orion Ramsey, and Andrew Howwell. And whereas the team's successful season would not have been possible without the extrude knowledge and leadership of their coaches, Fred McFatten, Tony Pittman, and Larry Redmond. And whereas the members of Team Pontiac, Team Michigan Special Olympics Basketball Team epitomizes all that is good in today's athletes, as they have achieved a premier level of success in competition while exhibiting the highest degree of character. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pontiac City Council and Pontiac Mayor Tim Graham hereby honors and congratulates the coaches and the members of Team Pontiac, Team Michigan Special Olympics Basketball Team upon winning the silver medal nationally, and extend to them our best wishes for every continued success in all their future endeavors. Pontiac City Council, Pontiac, Michigan, July 12th, 2022, Councilman Mike McGinnis, Council President, Councilman Miguel Cookman, Council Member Brent Nicholson, Council Member Melanie Rutherford, Council Member William A. Carrington, President Pro Tem, Kathleen James, Council Member William Parker Jr., Council Member. Again, I congratulate this extraordinary team.
We also are joined by Pontiac's representative and the Michigan House of Representatives, the Honorable Brenda Carter, if you'd like to take the podium, she brings recommendation, commendation and recognition from the state of Michigan, you have the floor, Representative Carter.
Thank you, President, honorable councilbody, mayor, deputy mayor, citizens here, hey, you guys, you did it again, didn't you, yeah, well, I'm here again to recognize you. Pontiac's Special Olympics Basketball Team, let it be known that it's with pleasure to join with the teammates, coaches, community members, in celebrating the achievements of Pontiac's Special Olympics Basketball Team over multiple seasons. The team's continued success have culminated in their second silver medal on June 10th, 2022, at the National Special Olympics USA Basketball Tournament. With the exemplary record this team has attained, this group of disciplined student athletes has generated significant pride throughout this entire part of our state. In recognition of the Special Olympics Day at the Capitol, it is necessary to extend the most sincere congratulations to this inspiring team for persevering in the face of adversity and continuing to make the community incredibly proud. As opponents have learned throughout multiple seasons, this team that brings unity and a positive outlook to all levels of competition. Winning titles or compelling outstanding seasons is never an accident, while anything can happen in a single game, all teams show their true abilities and dedication over a long season or a challenging tournament. What distinguishes the best, however, is the efforts that appear in practice far removed from the excitement of game day. We admire team spirit, the efforts and the preparations of these talented young people. So, in special tribute, this document is signed and dedicated, once again, because you know you guys were in Lansing before, dedicating and congratulating the members and the coaches of Team Pontiac for its numerous accomplishments over several years. It's signed by State Representative Brenda Carter, and congratulations from the entire 101st legislature of the Michigan House of Representatives, thank you so much. Thank you very, and congratulations once again, once again, congratulations.
Thank you, Representative Carter, at this time, we have copies of the resolution that we'll be adopting on behalf of the city council and mayor that we will have to give to members of the coaching staff and the players themselves, I want to give the floor to Councilwoman Kathleen James.
Mr. President, I would just, you know, would like to ask if you could call their names and have them stand as their names are called, so that we can know who these gentlemen are.
All right, with that, Pro Tem Carrington, give it a shot.
Okay.
Their names are tough sometimes. Mr. Nate Perkins. Please go to the, I'll come to the.
Go to the podium.
Every team member that's present, we're gonna all get together and have a great group shot, celebrating Pontiac.
Fimera Colazo. Marquise Easton, he's not here, okay. Deonte Giles. Anthony Jasper, he's not here, okay. Rasheen Hatton, he's not here, okay. Orion Ramsey. Andre Howell. Coach Fred McFatten. Coach Tony Pittman. Coach Larry Redmond. Thank you, at this time, can the council come down so we can get a team picture?
Mayor as well.
The mayor, yes, of course.
Oh, wait a minute. No, mine does never rolled, I don't know why, I wish it did, because it's hard to get them in.
Not bad, not bad a habit of winning gets us back up here in front of this great community that we, we represent. As you can see, we're missing players because our players have families and they do work, so we understood this was pretty much of a last minute, but we could be no more proud of these gentlemen that represent us in Orlando. And they represented us well, even though it was a COVID year, we didn't get a chance to practice a lot, but we were able to get down there and do what we do, as, as we like to say, ambassadors of Pontiac and representing the state of Michigan, because we will represent Pontiac first, and then we'll be Team Michigan second. But it has been an honor, again, I work along my brother here, Coach Pittman and I, we had this vision of changing the name from Kennedy to Team Pontiac to represent the entire community, and we do have another vision there, and hopefully we will get with the new Parks and Rec Supervisor and try to bring Special Olympics to the entire community in all ages. Because we have seen what an entire community bringing the little ones along with our gentlemen over here, how exciting it can be, and it's very inspiring to see everybody enjoy themselves in this endeavor that we just completed, so again, we want to say thank you on behalf of Team Pontiac and for those that are not here. Again, we will be back together again, I think we start back in November to defend our state championship, and then four years from now to be in Minnesota. So again, be on the lookout for some things that we're gonna be offering to the Parks and Recreation, especially now we hear all these new things that's going on, so we're gonna blow this thing up, and Special Olympics is gonna be beyond the basketball team, we want to bring soccer, we want to bring bowling for our little ones, and volleyball, and. and so forth. So, we are excited. Again, we will be in contact with the mayor's office as well as with city council, and once we have our plans put together, we will be back here to introduce this thing. Thank you so much. We have a parent that would like to say something on behalf of her.
Hello, everybody. Deontay Giles is my son. He's been doing this, he's 28 since he was seven. I was, what made me get up here is because he brought up the city of Pontiac Recreation. Me and my mother was one of the people who ran Howarddale Ewok, and we did, I did Special Olympics, I was one of the main coaches. I stood right here and told everyone that I would work for free to keep them here. Of course, as we know, it was taken away. If we can bring this back, I did, I did basketball, volleyball, track and field. I would go up to Michigan State, they would compete, we won medals everywhere. I had a kid who was in a wheelchair, I made him get up, and about two months, he was running down the court, but he would fall, but he would shoot that ball up there. And it saddens me to know that Pontiac took the sports away from our special children, but all the other kids can go to Northern and Central and play and have something to come home to be proud about. So, once again, I'm going to stand up here again and say, I have five people that would work for free to bring this back to the city. I'm no longer here, I'm in Shelby, but I was born and raised here, 47 years, so you could never take Pontiac out of me. But at the same time, they need it back. They need, most of these young men over here are fathers now, as well as my son. And it's sad that they took it. So, if you guys can listen to these men here, these coaches, and bring this back, and because when we were down there, everywhere we go, I think I'm about right, I'm the only parent. I'd never miss, I packed my baby and we went to Florida. We, I was, I'm always the only parent, and I think if we bring it back here, they'll see what these kids are doing and travel with their kids and their nephews and cousins and, and see what they're out there doing and what they're fighting for. Thank you.
Council members or mayor that wish to have any thoughts? Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
Good evening. I want to say this to y'all, against COVID, against travel, against all odds, you represented this city so well. Kennedy School holds a special place in my heart because my brother, Myron Rutherford, if you remember, was on the basketball team. Well done, my good and faithful servant. And it's not just about the medal, it's about the badge of honor you carry. You will never be forgotten. You have created history, and you are thebomb.com, and I thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor, Mayor Grimal.
Well, I just want to say that each and every one of you make all of us here in the city of Pontiac proud. You've done an amazing job representing us. We appreciate everything you do. Want to thank the coaches as well for your effort, want to thank the statewide program. So, thank you all so much. We're, we're just so proud of you, and we appreciate you representing our great city. And please do follow up, because we definitely want to incorporate the program in some form or fashion, beginning with our fall program. We're going to be going out with an RFP and a more formalized process to solicit participants for our fall program, and that'll be happening in the next few weeks. So, so reach out as soon as possible, and we'll make sure that we plug you in.
Others that wish to have the floor? With that, another warm round of applause for Team Pontiac, which became Team Michigan and became Olympic medalists. Congratulations. Can I have a motion to adopt the City Council Resolution honoring Team Pontiac's Special Olympics basketball success?
Sport by Carrington.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Carrington. That motion is now before us. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, time for a rousing roll call vote to adopt it. Clerk Doyle.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Absolutely, yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Your historic victories will now go down in history, etched into the archives of the city of Pontiac, Michigan. Congratulations again. Thank you very much for joining us, so we can celebrate you as a community.
Thank you.
We are now at Subcommittee Reports, the second meeting of every month. We do a verbal check-in for those subcommittees to help organize and, and impact our work as a city council by specific topics. We turn first to Law and the Courts. That subcommittee's leader is Councilman William Parker, Jr.
Thank you, Brother President. The Law and Court Subcommittee met on June 27th at 4:00 PM and was really a very brisk discussion between the 50th District Representative, Mr. Lynette, and she talked about a number of things. One, she wanted to let us know that there was eight clerk positions open, so if you know anyone who wishes to work in the court environment, please have them apply. I believe that, that the applications are on the court website as well as the city website. She mentioned to us that, and we shared with her, the process of getting their HVAC system worked so that they have individual controls. We talked about still, that they are still closed except in-person hearings. They're, they're actually reconfiguring for the in-person hearing. They do one jury trial a month. They have rectified the parking issue with the company that is in control of parking, so that's working well. The computer issue that they was having was addressed. They are still wearing their masks because only 10% of the clerks have been vaccinated. They are looking for a possible doing some PCR testing as well as rapid testing. As I said, staffing is still short, but good results during their application process. They're in the middle of union negotiations. They was to hold a union mediation meeting on July 7th, and I haven't gotten a report on that yet. They thought that salary may still be an issue. They're trying to get the starting wage to match those of the surrounding area. Being advised, though, that some of the things are moving slow because they've lost 12 clerks in the last two years, and so they're just devising a strategy for making sure they get union agreement and how they move forward with that process. They just want to get some people hired, get some people trained, and address the issues that are, that applies to the court. And all the, as I said, all of the vacant positions are posted on the city website as well as the court's website, and everything else is going well.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Kathalye James, on behalf of the Parks, Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee.
Yes, the Parks, Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee met on June the 27th at 12:30, and I'm just going to kind of go through the agenda. Apologize that I don't have my notes with me of, of some of the things that we talked about. But looking at the agenda, the Galloway Lake Park, we talked about the WRC underground construction that's going on. They're putting in some sewer lines underground in that park, and there was some concern on the part of the Subcommittee as to whether or not the work of the WRC would interfere with the plans that the city has to develop that park. So, there's ongoing conversation with WRC to ensure that none of the work that they are doing would constrict or restrict us in terms of seeing that park fully developed. We looked at the, talked about the major parks, our community parks, and talking about working on the ordinance to ensure that our parks have a specific time that they can be closed. That's been a problem with some of the parks that the ordinance says that they would be, they close at dusk, and that's kind of vague to be able to enforce with the Oakland County Sheriff's Office. So, we, we talked about a little bit, what do we need to put in that ordinance so that we can kind of beef it up, make it more specific? And so, there was some discussion about that, and there will be additional discussion because we will have to come up with a specific way that we can ensure that we can close our parks when we need to be able to close them. The targets for 2022, we talked about the parks that we will be working with volunteer programs to try to get work done in those parks, and some of the targets were the Madge Burt Park, which is a little small park that's on Forest Street that needs some paint, that needs some work, also the Lakeside Park, Richardson Park, and those were, those were the three targets for volunteer. You know, if we have groups that want to work in parks, there's always work that can be done. If you have a church group, in fact, we had our first youth group from a Pontiac church, Liberty Church, who actually reached out, wanted to do a volunteer project in the park, and they were able to work in, I think it was Aaron Perry Park. So, there are volunteer projects that are available to groups that are interested in doing something in a park. Public works, we talked about the grass cutting contracts with the city of Pontiac and what the plan was in terms of making sure that we got the city-owned properties cut properly. And in addition to that, when the, when a homeowner is not, or a property owner is not cutting their grass in a timely manner, the city's response to make sure that that grass gets cut as well. We talked about the repeat lighting outages that we've had. I know particularly in District 4, we've had large spaces along Walton Boulevard that have been out for almost a month at a time. So, we are, and, and we're not the only ones, there are areas throughout the city where we have had multiple outages of, of the same lighting infrastructure. So, we talked about that a little bit, and we are working to put some plans together to understand, you know, what we need to do with the lighting infrastructure. Are we, are the repeat outages mainly areas where the equipment is old? We're trying to do that root cause of understanding what is causing these repeat outages. So, that is something that's under current investigation with the Parks, Recreation and Public Works. That's my, my report.
Thank you. On behalf of the Facilities and Properties Subcommittee, Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. The Facilities and Properties Subcommittee met on June 24th, 2022. Some of the key items of discussion were the Oakland County Tax Focution Properties and the city's right of first refusal, which tonight we have a resolution concerning that. So, it was good to hear that the city is actually starting to look at these properties before they go into the open market for those that stay outside of our city to actually purchase these properties. So, it was good that the city is being proactive in looking at these properties. Facilities improvements and maintenance of our city buildings. And if you look at this year's budget, we made sure that we included facilities upgrades as well as ways to make sure we continue to maintain our city buildings. We also placed in the budget so the administration can implement a facilities condition assessment, so we can really, really do a deep dive in exactly the costs to make sure we maintain our building as well as, will we think about anything in the future about building another city hall, or is it more feasible to continue to work with our upgrades? And that's basically it.
Thank you. Finance and Personnel, Councilman Nicholson.
Our last Finance and Personnel Committee meeting was June 9th, so we were in the full swing of budget season. What we do at those meetings is we review the previous, the most previous months' closed financials, so in June, that would have been April. So, we, as a group, and public is welcome, review any large discrepancies between the budget and the actuals, and then have conversation about where we feel those things will lie, if there are outstanding bills, or if there's something that, you know, we have on the horizon so we can reconcile those variances. We discussed our, the city's investment policy, which was implemented during emergency financial management, talked about what, what the legal limits are of that investment policy as a group. You know, so far, it's been determined that that policy is widely set by state legislation, so there's very little that our city is doing via the investment policy that could or should change, but we will, as we are required to do by the city charter, review that annually. The update from the HR Department regarding personnel, many of the positions that have been posted on our website, we talked about our ability to attract candidates through the technologies that we have. It seems to be running pretty smoothly. The deputy mayor gave a report that there were lots of candidates coming through for the positions that reported directly to him, so we're excited to hear that and have those interviews moving swiftly so we can wrap up some of those positions. As we know, many positions were added as of July 1st with the passing of the new budget, so there's a whole new crop of, of positions for her to spend her time on. Update on the forensic audit, that our audit partner is happy with where things are. Our department heads have responded to each and every request swiftly, and they are, are working strongly on that, and they're on track to finish that budget, or that forensic audit on time. Want to give, just remind people that our next Finance and Personnel Committee meeting is Thursday, this Thursday, 2:00 PM Legislative Conference Room. Members of the community are welcome.
Thank you. The Public Safety, Health and Wellness Subcommittee did not meet this in the last month, so we'll forego a Subcommittee Report for that Subcommittee. And then finally, on behalf of the Economic Development, Housing and Planning Subcommittee, the most recent meeting was yesterday, July 11th. Here are some of the highlights of the, the many items discussed. In the most recent budget adopted, the master plan, funding to revisit and redo a comprehensive master plan for the city of Pontiac, since it's been a number of years since the most recent update, which was in 2014. A best practice is to revisit and review it every five years, so that was built into the budget, and that will be happening between now and next June. We talked about strategies to, in the future, then make many changes to modernize and update the zoning map to reflect those matters, and also incorporating economic development strategies for our long-range plans as a community. The rental properties landscape in our city, the city council will be receiving proposals from the administration in coming council meetings to strengthen the city's aggressive approach so that rental properties are registered and inspected, so that way they are safe, they are a harmonious addition to a neighborhood, not a blight, not a hindrance to those that are living there and those that have to live around it. So, that will be something before the city council very soon. The budget incorporated doubling and strengthening the code enforcement approach as the city. We talked about the implementation of that. We had the Executive Director of Main Street Pontiac on hand to talk about innovative strategies for bringing new life and new commerce to our historic downtown. The city council will be receiving a first reading next week of a zoning map amendment change that has been shared previously, but it is at Caesar Chavez Avenue and Kinney, a BYOP Caesar Chavez LLC proposal that would take a C3 corridor zoning to M1 manufacturing. And the demolition schedule, Batch 17, was adopted by the city council earlier this year. We received an update that that will be back on schedule, and they intend to have all of the properties down that was on that list by the end of August at the latest. So, please, as a community, communicate to us what you're seeing. They are working to aggressively make sure every property has disconnects with gas and ensuring that there's not a negative impact. In District 7, for example, there is a, a private homeowner, a house, right behind a property at Sanford and Auburn that's coming down, and so they have to be very strategic so that way they don't harm somebody's private property as that one of those properties is coming down. And then finally, the Oakland County Treasurer's Office has announced that they are establishing an Oakland County Land Bank. So, we'll learn more in the coming months, but that will have implications for Pontiac and economic development strategies. That is something that has been discussed for many years, and now with the alignment of the political stars, if, if you will, they are in a position where they're finally able to do it. And so, we're eager to learn more about how that can be most advantageous to Pontiac and our residents. So, with that, that concludes... So with that, that concludes Subcommittee reports. We are now at discussion items. The first is senior recreation field trips, upcoming opportunities. As you know, in our city, we have two senior citizen centers, and both of those centers and their staff work very hard to provide many youth recreation opportunities. Some of them involve trips. And one of them is to Idlewild in August, a big annual tradition. And I want to acknowledge that Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford, representing District One, has utilized some of her district project funds to underwrite that. So that way, that trip can be possible. So I want to give the floor to Councilwoman Rutherford for reflections on the upcoming trip to Idlewild for our Pontiac seniors.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Idlewild is a place where, in the 1940s, 50s, to the 60s, where African America, affluent African Americans went every summer to do what we do best, to fellowship, to love, and to be inspired. And so I was so taken aback that there was a possibility that the seniors would not have transportation, that I called my lovely A1 president, Mr. Mike McGinnis, and I said, "Sir," and he said, "Ma'am." And I said, "Can we just pay for the two buses?" And let me tell you why, because everybody who's anybody who's ever been from this city goes to Idlewild, and you guys need a place to do that and to enjoy it. So it's for the seniors. The buses are already paid for, courtesy of myself and the lovely council that you see before us, and I hope that you go sign up because that sign-up day started today, and that is through the Bowen Center. And so again, I thank you guys for this opportunity. Thank you, sir, for helping me to get that done and to facilitate it, because Idlewild is not just history, it's a treasure, and everybody should be able to participate. Thank you so much.
And to elaborate on that point, it, space is limited, but you must sign up in person at the Bowen Center, and that sign-up opportunity started today. Ruth Peterson Center also has multiple trips that they do. There is essentially a senior fellowship day down at Belle Isle in Detroit. That's a trip that already is, I think, filled up, but coming up soon. And there is a new trip as well that Ruth Peterson Center has announced. So please connect with Ruth Peterson to learn more about those opportunities. But I want to give the floor to Mayor Grimal. You have the floor?
I just want to thank Councilwoman Rutherford for her leadership in putting together this trip. I have been to Idlewild a couple of times myself, and while it's certainly not what it was in its amazing heyday, it is still a very special place and has incredibly important history to share with, with all of us. And it's, it's really great that we're making this opportunity available for our seniors. So thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? And I had it on the top of my head what the Ruth Peterson trip was, and I sent a text message to Gladys Smith, seeing if she could give it to me, that I want to make sure that everyone knows about it. I, I don't want to misquote it, but I think it is a museum field trip that's in the region. But those are free recreation opportunities to our Pontiac seniors, and it's many offerings that they try and do throughout the year. And so we wanted just to ensure that the Pontiac seniors know about that recreation opportunity. And thank you again, Councilwoman Rutherford, for allowing some of the District One council district project funding to be able to make that happen, because that means more recreation can happen out of the existing line of budgets. With that, hearing no further discussion, our next discussion item is Pontiac Arts Commission's lawn chair concert series. I wanted to just make sure that everyone was fully aware that the series continues. They had a very successful offering at Goldner Walsh on June 30th, and the next concert series is this coming Thursday.
Yes.
And I want to give the floor to anyone that would like to elaborate further. Councilwoman Rutherford.
Music, arts, performance, it's the way of life. It's going to be a great opportunity for you to see artists from the city of Pontiac that you probably never saw before. If you have never seen the Latino experience that's going to be happening, you need to be involved. They are actually doing foot, boots on the ground, as we say, to promote these events, and they are free to our citizens. So if you have nothing to do on Thursday, you want to get your groove on, you need to come on down and make sure y'all come and enjoy the performance. I am so excited because art is a ministry, art is the way of life, art is just cool. And so it's going to be a great live musicians, great love, and they're all from the city of Pontiac, so we have to support our own because they're supported in the world. It's time for us to support them in Pontiac, so thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to emphasize, on the council agenda under Mayor's Office Communications, we list the remaining lawn chair concert series throughout the city. The information that's set so far, and really want to celebrate the Pontiac Arts Commission who volunteer to make these initiatives possible. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Well, I wondered if I might run through those events now rather than under my communications, but if you'd rather I wait?
No, go for it. That sounds like a very fine idea.
Yeah, and I, I want to just preface this by, by saying how great this series is. You know, one of our focuses is to have more signature events here in the city of Pontiac so that Pontiac's residents can do fun things and enjoyable things and spend their time right here in the city of Pontiac instead of having to go to other communities for, for fun activities. But also, we want to attract more visitors to Pontiac who will ultimately spend their hard-earned dollars here in our city, supporting our small businesses, supporting our employees. And this series is just one example of those efforts. The first event was awesome at Goldner Walsh. It was a lot of fun. I wasn't able to stay for the whole thing, but I stayed for the opening act, which, who was a comedian from Pontiac, as, as Councilwoman Rutherford said. And we've just got a lot of really incredible homegrown talent throughout this series. I want to thank the Pontiac Arts Commission for their hard work, but also Alex Borngesser on our staff, who's been working very closely with the Pontiac Arts Commissioner to do fundraising, to make sure that we have the funds needed to pay the artists to perform at these events and to make sure that the resources are there to actually make sure all of these things happen. The next event, as has been mentioned, is on July 14th. That's at Oakland Park. All of these events, the doors open at 6 o'clock, the events start at 6:30 PM. There's always an opening act followed by a headliner. So again, the next one is July 14th, next week, at, actually, not next, is that next week?
It is next, this Thursday.
It's this Thursday, right? Okay, I was going to say, that seems sooner than next week. So this Thursday, July 14th, at 6 o'clock at Oakland Park. The next one is July 28th at 6 o'clock at J.C. Park on the north side. The following one is August 11th at 6 o'clock at the Oakland History Center off of Caesar Chavez. Then August 25th at 6:00 PM at Murphy Park, followed by September 8th at 6:00 PM at Charlie Harrison Park. And we save the best and grand finale for last, which is, originally was going to be September 22nd, but that's moved, been moved up to September 15th at 6:00 PM at Rotary Park on the city's south side. And as you can tell, we're trying to make sure that we have these events in all different geographic locations all around the city so that they're making the rounds to a neighborhood near you regardless of where you live in the city of Pontiac.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor?
Mayor Grimal.
Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, sir.
You're good.
Thank you. Have they given you the list of the updated artists that's going to be performing for those events?
Not all of them, no. I think we only have so far the events through, let's see, August, well, actually, I think we've got all the, the artists through September 8th is my understanding. And are you asking me to run through those right now or just to talk offline about them?
I just want to know the artist names if you, if you have, but if you don't, we can wait and do it another week.
Yeah, I can, I can run through them quickly with the permission of Council President. So July 14th, I don't know if people already mentioned the names, but Kisma Jordan and Karema Jenkins de Jesus. And then on July 28th, J.C. Park, Accent Pontiac and Pancho Villa Skull. August 11th at Oakland History Center, Paula Michelle and our very own Quincy Stewart. August 25th at Murphy Park, Jill Marie Hamilton. September 8th at Charlie Harrison Park, Gwen Fox. And to be determined for September 15th at Rotary Park.
I know.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, thank you very much. We move now to recognition of elected officials. Are there any elected officials with us this evening that we should be recognized? The Honorable H. Bill Maxey, Pontiac Library Board Trustee, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, and our 8,000 senior citizens. Two things coming out of the library. Number one, a practical guide for tenant landlord experiences. Between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00, there will be someone from our staff to sit down and talk with you about the contracts you have with the landlord tenant. Don't forget, Pontiac Pramazon, we have $3,000 per year, 36 over four years. Vocational, academic, in the Pontiac School District. Access information have been given to your councilpersons. Parents, call and find out why. I found out tonight that one of the young men that was not 27 years old, we still have, we are just at our roots, they can now get a GED and go to college. These two things, we need your assistance. Again, for our 8,000 seniors, I'll talk about this in comments, and for the Pramazon, guaranteed success. Your money is here. If you can't get your councilperson, library, between 3:00 and 5:00, we have literature. Outside of District One, I'll sit down.
Thank you. We are now, are there any other requests for elected officials to be recognized? With that, we're now at Agenda Address. President Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Agenda address allows the citizens to commit, to comment on agenda items on the agenda. So first, we have Ms. Clark. Could you please tell me the item that you were commenting on for our record? Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Good afternoon, Councilman, Mayor. I need you to kind of explain, not just me, but to the citizens of Pontiac, because you seem to focus on dogs. And we know what animal ordinance mean, but we want to know why the focus on dogs and not the other pets. And that's where mass confusion is going on right now, with there are a lot of residents of Pontiac, because we do have wild animals. We have wild skunks, wild squirrels, I mean, wild everything, possums, deers. And they do pose a threat to a lot of the people, homes, because of the overgrown grass and the overgrown, the, the property's not being maintained. So help us to understand why the dogs are, are just the main issue to control. That's where we kind of confused that.
Thank you, ma'am. Is it Ilo, Ilo Miller? If I pronounced that wrong, please correct me. Iola?
Yes, sir.
What item on the agenda, ma'am?
The first item I want to talk about briefly is the, the budget for the IT, information technology. It's important that the city of Pontiac has updated IT information. And because it's on the agenda, I wanted to talk about the, the American Rescue Plan, where there's $37 million there. And one of the proposals was for a smart city initiative that would put a broad man in the community, and I just wanted to update on the progress of that, where I can find out what's happening with that $37 million, and if the smart initiative is something that the city council and the mayor is going to put into action. The second thing I want to talk about is the, that foreclosure item. And I wanted just to know if there is a foreclosure tax list that the public can look at, and maybe if they wanted to purchase that property, or is it just for the city of Pontiac to Councilman President McGinnis talked about the Oakland County Land Bank, and I'm thinking that's a part of that foreclosure. If I'm wrong, if you can talk about it, I, I'd appreciate it. And the last thing I want to talk about is the fireworks. That's, that's all. And I just want to congratulate the city of Pontiac, it was fantastic. I just stumbled upon it, so maybe next year, you can talk about it more in advance so we get a bigger crowd, because that was a lot of money and a few people. But it was fantastic, so thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Deidre Waterman.
Yes, Ms. Miller, I'm glad you brought up the ARP, because I'm glad now that the council has finished the budget that you're having that special meeting. And I hope it's a special meeting, you're going to be talking, talking about some strategic things, including the money for the ARP. That's the American Rescue Plan, one-time money that's coming into the city for COVID relief, which is the citizens' money. It's supposed to be used for special projects such as neighborhood stabilization, supporting small businesses. And also, it can be done for projects like establishing the infrastructure for IT. This is one-time money that can be done for transformational projects. Now, one of the things I hope you reconsider is that I see that in the budget, you had a structural deficit. You were spending more than you got in. It was about 3.7 million, but you used 10 million of the ARP money to balance it. Otherwise, the structural deficit would have been 13 million. So you don't have to do that. Don't use the ARP money. That was, we fought for that. $38 million that we're bringing to the city that we had to fight for because it was only going to be 5.8 million. And remember, I told you, we got Secretary of the Treasury, Janet Alson, to grant Pontiac 38 million. And with that, we can do some really transformational things. And that's what I would hope to do. That's how that money was intended. It was intended to help municipalities who would have been affected by COVID, by COVID, and are still far behind. And so I hope we do that. This is the people's money. We had a number of town halls, and I think that's where Ms. Miller got the idea about the, of the structure for IT. But there's other things, too. You know, we can also talk about small business revolving loan fund for small businesses that are still behind. We can talk about, you know, relief for our homeowners to maintain their homes. They need that money now. We've already had $19 million in the budget in our treasury since last June. So I hope you do, to, to continue to discuss that at your special meeting and see how we can use that for the benefit of the people.
All right, thank you. Mr. Larry Jasper, what item?
I'll be talking about Item 8, Item 6, and Item 7, along with why all this is being done without notification and discussion prior to. In accordance to the resolution, you're doing a first right of refusal on foreclosure properties out of Oakland County, which I find kind of funny since it wasn't set in the budget. Yet you're talking about selling 700 to 800 properties that you haven't cut the grass. Now, I hate to tell you, the stakeholder in this is the, is the citizen of Pontiac, not the people part of the partnership. United Development of Michigan, September 22nd, 2020. You'll see a video here at the city council with all the members that are involved and stakeholders in the GSA, Global Settlement Agreement initiated by Mrs. Waterman here, underneath client privilege, in other words, confidentiality. This is all part of that. The Oakland County Bank, Property Bank, was part of their demands. I have letters to that issue. You can watch the video, you'll see who's involved. That incorporates not only Bloomfield Park or Bloomfield Investors, you know, over there, they've got a 35-year tax abatement that was done with the 425 agreement, but also incorporates Radeco, also incorporates Glenwood Estates, also incorporates Carriage Circle. And I'm suggesting that it may also incorporate this new development they're talking about on Lake Shore. But I know those people are all involved because the attorney stated as much before they went behind closed doors. They're all one party. And this is all a part of that global settlement agreement. Neither one, nobody supposedly has talked about it. We have two attorneys that should be going through it, Mr. Carrington and Mr. McMeness, McMeness, as an attorney, should be reviewing those documents word by word because it affects the citizen, it affects the stakeholder. And this is all about what's going on in the resolution, so this should be brought up to their attention during the discussions and approving of that resolution. And then in the special meeting, the ARP, the money given by Biden for this city should be used for telecommunications and smart stuff. If you took a look at my website, you'll see that I have a whole plan outlined for that, and the city should be doing that for its people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. President McGinnis, that concludes our public agenda address.
We are now at ordinances, and we have before us, it was postponed last week to come before us again, Chapter 18 of the municipal code is animals. And there are changes that are before us. At a previous meeting, one amendment was adopted, and that amendment was striking the prohibition of insects and reptiles. the prohibition of insects and reptiles being able to be kept, sold, possessed, or maintained with the city. So, excuse me, reptiles or serpents. So reptiles or serpents, that amendment has already been adopted. So what you see before you are changes to the municipal code in addition to the amendment that was also adopted. The question was invoked, why this specifically? These are essentially trying to tighten up what we're seeing as straightforward changes, but we know that there are many more changes that in time we want to research further. Questions have been raised by council members in terms of how do we tackle or deal with wildlife and other animal life forms, but we wanted to address the ones that had been discussed for about three or four years, that we might be able to at least handle those straightforward items and then get to the more complex ones. But it's the pleasure of this council. If any or all of these changes will be made, there already is an animals ordinance. This isn't creating a new one. This is making some adjustments. There are two documents that I have received. One during the course of this meeting was from the mayor. I don't know if the mayor or deputy mayor wants to share what they circulated and what changes that might reflect. What we have before us is what was discussed in the previous weeks and tabled before us. Mayor, was there anything that you had circulated a document during the course of this meeting? Was there something specifically you want to highlight for us?
Well, just that these are the changes that the city's attorney had recommended, which I think are a little bit different from the possible changes that were included in the council packet. The only real difference, they're very similar in that they both get rid of the definition of collar. And the city's attorney confirmed that collar is not currently used anywhere in the ordinance, so we don't need a definition for it. They're slightly different in that the one in the packet would combine the part of the definition of collar with the definition of at-large, whereas the city's attorney recommended that just the definition of collar be eliminated entirely. Other than that, I think the two documents are identical.
Okay. So that was an amendment that was proposed last week but withdrawn and never adopted.
That's my understanding.
So what's before us is still includes the collar definition, so that would be another amendment that wished to be made. Councilwoman James also had some language that she shared with me this afternoon that might be some other options as well in terms of the definition of dangerous dog. So what we're doing is handling each recommended change, you know, sort of piece by piece. And then ultimately, it's a matter of if these are changes that a majority of the council wishes to make. Otherwise, we can table it indefinitely if the changes are not supported. Is there a motion to amend the ordinance amendment before us that strikes the definition of collar?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that strikes the language or otherwise collar means by, collar means any banned comma chain. So that the language would read at-large means of off the premise of the owner and not under control of a human being other by, either by leash, cord, harness, or suitable device worn around the neck of the dog to which a license may be affixed.
Okay, so there's been a motion to amend, and it's been seconded. So it would essentially combine the definition of at-large and collar, but in that, strike chain or otherwise, and then strike collar means any banned chain. Is that correct?
That's correct. I believe that the term "may" allows for people to determine whether or not they seek a license.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that amendment that resolves the definition of what currently is at-large and the definition currently of collar? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on this amendment only, not the overall motion, but the this amendment only, which makes that definition change for at-large and striking a separate definition for collar. Roll call, Clerk Doyle on the amendment.
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That amendment carries. We are now at the main motion as further amended. Are there any other amendments that council members wish to make?
Yes.
Councilwoman James, you have the floor. Please state your amendment proposal.
My amendment proposal is I would like to limit the definition of dangerous dog to one that bites a person rather than to add, the full language is that bites or attacks a person, a dog that bites or attacks another dog, or domestic animal. And ideally, I think we need to limit this to what the county's definition of dangerous animal is. And pretty much consistently throughout the state, a dangerous animal is one that bites a human. And, you know, when you talk about putting an animal to sleep and getting rid of an animal, generally, that is something that relates to an animal that bites a human as opposed to another animal. So I'm just kind of concerned that our definition of dangerous, dangerous dog is a little too wide, and I'd like to see it really just say this is a dangerous animal. So the language I would propose is a dangerous dog means a dog that bites or attacks a person or another dog or, well, wait a minute. A dangerous dog means a dog that bites or attacks a person. However, a dangerous dog does not include any of the following. So everything else in there would go except for just, you know, what that, the definition of a dangerous dog.
So it's been moved that the definition proposed for dangerous dog be amended to strike part of the language. Is there a section? Is there a second to that motion to amend? I will second it. I can roll with that. So what the amendment does, it would make it so that dangerous dog means a dog that bites or attacks a person, period. However, a dangerous dog does not include any of the following. A dog that bites or attacks a person who is knowingly criminally trespassing upon the property of the animal's owner. Two, a dog that bites or attacks a person who provokes or torments the animal. Or three, a dog that is responding in a manner that an ordinary and reasonable person would conclude was intended to protect a person if that person was engaged in a lawful activity or is the subject of an assault. So that's the amendment before us, and it's okay if that's not the sentiment of the council. We can have a brief discussion and then vote on it. If it fails, then we've got what currently the language is before us. Councilwoman Rutherford and Councilman Nicholson.
So point of clarity, I think the concern for me is understanding, let's say, what you consider is not a dangerous dog to you, per se, may be a dangerous dog to someone else. And so I don't think that if we take away the limitations of it, it could cause, there's no room for error. So if a shih-tzu bites me or scratches me and has rabies, it's not a dangerous dog. So I think we have to be careful about that, because sometimes dogs are healthy for one point, and then later on in life, they're not healthy. And also, sometimes smaller dogs actually do attack people as well. So it's like, that's what my hesitation is with it. I just need more clarity about it before we can vote, before I can vote, excuse me. So I just want to get a understanding, why are you, Councilwoman James? And I'm not, no disrespect, but I just want you to explain to me what made you come to this.
Councilman Nicholson, then Councilwoman James.
Is, just as a question for administrations, they were familiar with the previous ordinance. Did the previous ordinance include other animals? Or is this completely new to add other animal?
The...
Or did it not define dangerous at all?
I don't think it defined dangerous dog at all. And, you know, that's really why we're bringing this forward is, and just to tie this into some of the questions from the public. This is designed just as an immediate means by which to define dangerous dog, because currently, there is no definition of dangerous dog in our ordinance. There has been a draft ordinance from the previous council that would add an entire article under this portion of the ordinance that would be a little more detailed and broad. But this is designed just to address the most immediate danger to people that animal control can easily enforce, which is defining and addressing dangerous dog. So to answer the councilman's question, there is not currently any definition of dangerous dog in city ordinance, and this is designed to address that.
Thank you. My concern is in voting on, for me, while I would not be in favor of this, is I have met several dogs roaming the streets that seem to be victims of dogfights. And my dog may be kept on a leash in my backyard, and another dog enters the property and attacks my dog. Dog to dog would not now, no longer be covered, that dog would not be dangerous. So I've met these dogs out on the street. Some of them are very loving, some of them have been trained not to be. So that is, that's my concern. I feel comfortable keeping the language, but I'll let us continue.
Councilwoman James and Protam Carrington.
Well, you know, I think, you know, we can go forward with the language as it's been presented, but I think, you know, my concern is that I just want us to be aware that we are approving an ordinance or change to an ordinance that's not currently enforceable, because the city of Pontiac has no animal control people. Oakland County is the one that provides animal control, and their statutes, you know, clearly say that they will not enforce beyond their own ordinance. And their own ordinance says that a dangerous animal is one who bites a human. So therefore, you know, even though I can understand what you're saying, you know, about another, a dog biting another animal, you know, ordinances are about enforcement, in my mind. And they're about, you know, what, how are we controlling this within our city? So if we look at what is enforceable at the current time, it is that if an animal bites a human, that owner can expect for Oakland County animal control to respond to that complaint. Whereas if we say that the dog has attacked another dog, I'm not sure if that necessarily would be responded to. So as long as we understand that, that what we're approving is something that may not be enforceable, then that, you know, that's okay, because at least we're aware of what we're doing.
Protam Carrington, Mayor Grimal, Councilman Nicholson.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I think my concern is, is that, I guess I'm someone that likes to do my own research, and not having this prior, even with an email, so I can actually kind of look up some of those county ordinance myself. It would have been beneficial for me to actually understand exactly the magnitude of your comparison between the county and this ordinance. So it's kind of hard for me to not vote on this current statute based on that, just not having an opportunity for me to look up some of these things myself and not on the fly. Councilwoman.
Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that I think Councilwoman James is right that Oakland County animal control would not enforce the ordinance. But the thought was that our own code enforcement officers can enforce the ordinance. So if a dog bites another dog, and again, this would only apply to dogs that are on the leash or under the control of another, another human being. If a dog were to bite them, or if a dog at large that's owned by a person were to threaten a human being, which would also be eliminated, that language would also be eliminated under the proposed language, that a city code enforcement officer could issue a civil infraction for the first violation and then a misdemeanor for subsequent violations. So even though the Oakland County animal control officers might not enforce it, our own city code enforcement could enforce it. The other thing I would note that I think is important is there's nothing in this ordinance that would compel the destruction or euthanizing of a dog, even if it is deemed a dangerous dog or the owner is cited with a civil infraction or a misdemeanor. That would all still be determined in terms of euthanizing dogs. That would all still be determined under state and county law.
Further discussion on this amendment?
The mayor took care of my comments. Thank you.
So hearing no further discussion, what we have before us is an amendment that would take the dangerous dog language and add a period after attacks a person and strikes the phrases talking about dog on other dog or other animals. And then it resumes with however, a dangerous dog does not include any of the following with the same one, two, three. Any clarity needed on the amendment before us? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on that amendment further limiting the definition of dangerous dog. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
No.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Four yeas, two nays.
That amendment carries.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I believe Councilwoman Rutherford was confused about the question. She just announced, oh, crap, I voted the wrong way.
Yeah, well, I thought we were voting on the amendment as a whole. Did I make a mistake? I'm sorry, I'm writing notes now.
Clerk Doyle, is there already, if we redo the roll call? Do we have the authority to do that?
No.
You have to rescind.
Councilwoman Rutherford, do you make a motion to rescind this amendment change?
Yes, I make the motion to rescind.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been seconded, moved by Rutherford, seconded by Nicholson, that this amended language that was just adopted be rescinded. Hearing no discussion, roll call on rescinding the decision just made. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
All right, so that has been rescinded. Clerk, Councilwoman James, do you make the motion to amend to essentially replicate the amendment we just made? Do you make that motion that you made previously?
Yes.
And I will second again. So we have that amendment before us, which is modifying the definition of dangerous dog further, but says it's a dog that attacks a person, period. Are we all clear on what the motion is before us?
I think, yeah. Because it's just my understanding, you just have to actually take the vote again. You don't have to ask, is there a motion? Is there a second? Because that still stands. So you're just taking the vote.
So the motion that we adopted was to rescind the vote?
Correct.
All right. As long as everyone's clear and everyone's comfortable with the intent is that amendment that Councilwoman James moved and I seconded is now before us. And now we are voting on it again to allow for the proper reflection of what the will of the vote was for the council, so everyone was clear. With that, roll call on adoption of the amendment clarifying the dangerous dog definition. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
No.
Carrington?
No.
Three yeas, three nays.
That amendment fails, and I'm glad that we are reflecting what the will of the majority of the council is. So I make a very minor amendment that in the dangerous dog definition, that last sentence where it says however, a dangerous animal does not include any of the following, I move to strike animal and then replace it with dog.
I support.
I think that was a leftover from a past definition. So swapping animal for dog, moved by McGinnis, seconded by Rutherford. Any clarification or discussion needed?
Just repeat that for me, sir.
Sure. Under the definition of dangerous dog, if the last line right now reads before the one, two, three, it says however, a dangerous animal does not include any of the following. And I am proposing that it instead read however, a dangerous dog.
Do we need a motion for that?
I moved it. Rutherford seconded. I just want to make sure the clerk was at where we were at. How do you feel, Clerk Doyle? You find it?
Yep.
Any further clarification needed? Presuming that no further discussion is needed, roll call on that amendment. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Are there other amendments? Hearing no further amendments, what I'm going to do is recap all the changes that have been made over the previous three weeks. It eliminates the definition of collar. It updates the definition of at large to read, at large means off the premises of the owner and not under the control of a human being, either by leash, cord, harness, or suitable device worn around the neck of the dog to which a license may be affixed. It changes the definition, it makes a new definition of dangerous dog, where previously there was just dangerous animal, I believe, but no definition of dangerous dog. It creates a definition now that reads, dangerous dog means a dog that bites or attacks a person, a dog that bites or attacks another dog or domestic animal, while the other dog or domestic animal is on the property or under the control of its owner, or a dog that threatens a person while the dog is at large. However, a dangerous dog does not include any of the following. One, a dog that bites or attacks a person who is knowingly criminally trespassing upon the property of the animal's owner. Two, a dog that bites or attacks a person who provokes or torments the animal. Or three, a dog that is responding in a manner that an ordinary and reasonable person would conclude was intended to protect a person if that person is engaged in a lawful activity or is the subject of an assault. Some of the other changes that it makes. It eliminates reptiles or serpents in the list of prohibited animals, meaning what is already the common practice of people keeping reptiles or serpents as pets, et cetera. It will no longer be a violation of the code. It eliminates reptiles or serpents in the line up. It also clarifies that it's rooster chickens that are prohibited, meaning you cannot have rooster chickens in our beautiful city of Pontiac, and it makes it more compatible with other ordinances that allow for chickens, but no roosters. It also adds the phrase, or harm or hazardous, so that way it reads under prohibited animals, any other inherently harmful or hazardous animal, reptile, fish, or insect. So even though, for example, reptiles or serpents are allowed, that doesn't mean all reptiles are allowed. So no alligators or crocodiles would be legal, because that is harmful or hazardous to us residents. It strikes, also in this prohibited section, it strikes the line of prohibited further that this section shall not apply to the keeping of birds, dogs, cats, and other harmless and domesticated pets, because it was a confusing, confusing statement. And then, just making sure I'm recapping for the community and the council all the changes, it adds Section 18-53, dangerous dogs prohibited. No owner shall harbor or keep a dangerous dog. Furthermore, no owner shall harbor or keep a dog in a manner that allows it to behave so as to constitute a dangerous dog. Violations of this section shall be deemed, one, a civil infraction for the first violation, and two, a misdemeanor for all subsequent violations. B, upon a conviction of a misdemeanor under this section of a person that has received a civil infraction and misdemeanor related to the same dangerous dog, ownership of that dangerous dog shall be relinquished within 30 days of conviction. So that's why it was so important to define dangerous dog, because it impacts what are the penalties if that dangerous dog has multiple violations. And what that means practically is that there is the possibility, if the code is enforced, that that dangerous dog, because of their multiple violations, would be surrendered or relinquished. That dangerous dog could not remain with that, with that same owner in our city. Is there any further clarification needed? So that's the...
How do you have one?
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
So we're just, this amendment addresses dogs only, but we will be, at future reference, be addressing the other wild animals that everybody's been talking about.
That's right. We have referred the question more broadly to the public safety, health, and wellness. And this is true for all ordinances, but this is one that has come up through research and review and debate by council, that of further researching what strength thing we can do, what can make it stronger for our residents. And so this is not the only bite at the apple, but it's the early straightforward bite at the apple, so that way we have strengthened what was previously vague. So it deals with dangerous dogs, it deals with rooster chickens, and it lets out of the cage, figuratively speaking, reptiles and serpents no longer being prohibited. Those are the three primary changes that are before us.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further clarification needed? Hearing no further discussion, speaker's list is exhausted. We are now at the roll call to adopt the ordinance amendment for Chapter 18, Animals. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you for your deliberation and debate. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to schedule a special meeting of the Pontiac City Council?
I make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Carrington. So that's now before us. The intention was to try and schedule a strategic planning session that would be approximately five hours of the city council. Personal conflicts for multiple council members will mean that the 16th is not a viable date. I have inquired with colleagues if August 20th is a viable alternative date, and if it, enough of us know that it is right now, then we can substitute the date, and then ding bang boom, we're done. Otherwise, we'll keep going back to the drawing board. Councilman, Pro Tem, Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor.
August 20th works better for me, just because it's other, so many other things I've already scheduled.
Yeah.
I will be, I can come, but I won't be able to stay into its entirety.
Any further objection, any objections to August 20th, where we know for sure? So I move to amend the resolution before us, to substitute, instead of July 16th, we substitute the date of August 20th, and then instead of starting at 10:30, we start at 9:00 a.m.
Support.
It's been moved by McGinnis, seconded by Rutherford, so that's the amendment before us, where we're just substituting the time and date to better reflect what's viable.
Okay.
Hearing no further discussion on that amendment, this is just updating the date and time. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Sorry, Mr. President, what was the time?
9:00 a.m. start, as opposed to what was previously drafted in the resolution of 10:30.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the fiscal year 23 budget amendment for information technology and building department?
I make the motion.
Wait, wait. You voted on the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Look at me.
Come on, McGinnis.
Let me reverse my PowerPoint action. We are still at the main motion as amended.
You helmin, you helmin.
Hearing no discussion, roll call on the adoption of the resolution to schedule a special meeting as amended. Clerk Doyle.
Okay. Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
The motion carries for real. There was a motion, I believe I heard, to adopt, let me just do it again to be tight and right, is there a motion to adopt the fiscal year 23 budget amendment for information technology and building department?
I do the motion, but I do have a question. Point of clarity for that.
Support. It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Parker. The motion is now before us. We will not be voting on this in full. This is essentially the first reading.
Okay.
We have to provide the opportunity for the clerk to post the proposed budget amendment. So we anticipate that after this discussion, we'll move to table for three weeks, which allow, or two weeks, which gives him ample time to post, et cetera. But first, I'm going to give the floor to the administration to give us the context of what's before us. Mayor Grimal.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. As council knows, we recently passed a new budget for the new fiscal year that started July 1st, and part of that budget is designed to bring in-house our IT services, as opposed to continuing with the contract with the outside private contractor Insight. In addition, part of it is about bringing in-house our building department function so that we're no longer contracting with the outside contractor Wade Trim. As was discussed through the budget process, we weren't sure about the transition period there. We're now confident that we can complete the transition period of bringing in-house the IT positions by the end of July, and be complete with the transition for the building department, bringing those in-house by the end of August, I believe. And I do want to emphasize that we have offered positions in-house to everyone with the IT folks, so everyone who's worked with Insight, who wants to work here at the city, will be able to do that. And similarly, everybody who's been working with the building department through Wade Trim, who wants to continue working with the city, will be allowed to do so. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Carrington to talk about further details.
Good afternoon, Council. I think the mayor touched on the most important parts here. You know, just to reiterate, the budget basically assumed a January 1st, I'm sorry, July 1st transition date, in terms of us bringing these services back in-house. We knew that at the time of the budget. We now have a sense of operationally what the transition will look like. Because the budget put all of the costs into the salaries and wages category, we need to submit this budget amendment in order for us to cover the cost of the current contracts through the predicted, projected transition. So for the IT services, that transition would be a one month for the month of July, and for building services, it would be a two-month through the end of August. So the budget amendment is designed to cover those contracts, each of those respective contracts for those time periods. One month for the IT contract, and two months for the building services contract. So that's the basics of what we have put before you. It's, it would add $25,700, $25,700 to the professional services under the IT budget, which would, which would cover that contract, and then the building department contract, which is roughly $146,000 per month. We would be funding that for two months for a total of $293,000 added to the professional services general ledger account within the building fund.
Discussion, Councilman Nicholson, you have the floor.
So I, this is more of a personnel policy or consideration. I know we're, this is not the only time, and I'm sure in the future we're going to be looking at bringing some things from contract in-house. I just want to say we're setting a precedence with saying, anybody who's on contract with a secondary company is going to be offered their job. So if we do that this time, if there's another scenario like that, we're bringing in in-house, I just want to say, you know, if we, if we change course, that could, could seem very odd, where we say, you know, I mean, clearly, and this is not against any single person that works within those roles, and they've been working in those roles for a long time. I just am concerned about the long-term precedence of saying, we're not going to post publicly, allow for interviews, that, that, you know, give that opportunity.
Would you like to, so would you like to yield to Mayor Grimal?
Yeah, absolutely.
You have the floor, Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a really, I think, important point, and we, we are, we are not saying as a matter of course, in all instances, we're going to automatically do this, just to be clear. But we, as a matter of practicality in this situation, based on our assessment of the individuals, want to, at least as an initial matter, allow all building inspectors, and I should be a little more specific in terms of how I describe the building department, in terms of the building inspector positions, and in terms of the rental unit inspector positions, allowing those folks to continue in roles as inspectors. I believe we are planning to post actually for the building official role, just to be clear. In terms of the IT positions, one of the individuals has opted to take another position, not, not with Insight, but has a great job opportunity. The other two folks, we believe, have been doing a good job, and as a matter of practice in that case, wanted to extend the opportunity to them. But there's another broader issue, which is to really make the transition work in a timely way. We wanted to make sure that we were utilizing the talents that have been serving the city well. So, you know, you raise a good point about formally posting for the positions, and I don't know that there's anything that I have expressed that would prohibit us from doing that, because we know that we're going to need to fill some positions, because we know that some of the folks are not going to want to work directly for the city. But that's why I say we wanted to try to facilitate opportunities for those who had been working for the outside contractor and who want to continue working, and who, in our judgment, have been doing a good job, that opportunity. I don't know, Deputy Mayor Stevens, if you have any additional information, but...
Councilman Rutherford, Councilman Parker, Pro Tem Carrington, Councilman Nicholson. Councilwoman, you have the floor.
Mayor Grimal, just for point of clarity, for the building and safety, that's going to include new, the rental positions. When would they actually be posted, the ones that we do have available?
You yield the floor to Mayor Grimal.
I yield it to, yes, I do.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rutherford. Those positions should actually be posted now. If they're not, they will be posted, they, they should be posted now. If they're not, they will be posted this week.
Thank you.
Because I know that the code enforcement manager was posted, and I believe that the code enforcement positions themselves were posted last night.
Okay.
You still, you can reclaim your time, I'll allow it.
Thank you, sir. Exactly how many positions is it for rental inspection, just so that the citizens know how many are available, and also for code enforcement? I know that it's listed on the website, but some people who live in Pontiac don't have the internet, and so they need to know, like, what's the specifics, how many positions, and things of that nature.
So for a point of clarity...
Yielded again to Deputy Mayor Stevens. You have the floor.
Thank you. Again, for a point of clarity, there previously was a code enforcement position and a rental inspector position. Those two positions have been combined, and it is just one position. And there will be eight of those positions. Ten, oh, sorry, I believe 10 of those positions.
Thank you.
If I, if I may, there...
Further yielding jujitsu, Mayor Grimal.
We have it apart.
Just to clarify, there, there have been, in the, in the past, before the current fiscal year, two rental unit inspectors and four code enforcement officers. As we combine those, that would make six, but we're adding four of those positions, hence how we get to the total now in the new fiscal year of 10 total.
Thank you.
And just to the broader point, we hope to, at next week's council meeting, have a discussion item where we can amplify out all of the current job opportunities with the city of Pontiac, which, you know, would be helpful just to recap, because there's a lot of change and expanded opportunity there. We want our residents to be fully aware of those. And I, I think I heard in the audience that the library also is able to assist with navigating if people need assistance, accessing that information online as well. With that, we resume the speaker's list. Councilman Parker, you have the floor.
I just want to make sure for clarity's sake that we are not adding 293,000, we're just shifting it from where it was to where it will support the additional temporary labor that's needed to, for the transition.
Well, I'll leave it to Director Carrington.
Thank you. So yes and no. We, we do know that it will, there will be some savings, because we will not be spending those salaries during the months of July and August. But we, we know that it will not be a dollar-for-dollar savings, because there is a premium that we've been paying in connection with the contract. And so by bringing the services in-house, as was discussed during the budget process, you know, when we look at the building department, we know that there's going to be some expected savings. But again, the savings that we're going to get from not paying those salaries during the months of July and August are being off, are not offsetting completely the cost of the contract. So the, we are, we are shifting some, some of the expenses, but it will not fully offset the cost of the, the 293,000 cost of that contract. the contract. So the, we are, we are shifting some of the expenses, but it will not fully offset the cost of the 293,000, cost of that contract.
So what would be the, I'm sorry?
Reclaiming your time, and then if you want to defer to Mayor Grimal, he has further answer for you as well.
Well, I'll defer and hear his answer.
Well, you know, I, just to amplify the point that Mr. Carrington made, we, part of the reason for us bringing these services back in-house is that we know we will save a considerable amount of money by doing the services in-house instead of outsourcing them to a private contractor. We're foregoing that projected savings for July and August by continuing with the private contractor until the end of August, when the transition will be fully phased in. So, you know, we're not expending more money, or at least significantly more money than we had been last fiscal year, but we're foregoing those two months of savings that had been projected in the budget. So compared to the budget that was adopted effective July 1st, how much additional money will we be spending by contracting with Wade Trim through the end of August as opposed to the assumed transition date of July 1st? And how much additional money compared to the adopted budget will we be spending through the end of July as a result of continuing with Insight through the end of July instead of the assumed transition date of July 1st? I think that's really what Pastor Councilman Parker is asking.
Yes.
That's what I'm asking.
And we do, we do have those calculations. I can provide that in writing to the council in terms of what the numbers for July and August look like for the salaries that we're not going to incur and showing what the difference is in terms of the cost of the contract. I can give council that information.
Thank you.
Carrington, Nicholson, James, all right? You would forego?
I forego.
Councilman Nicholson, you have the floor.
I just want to amplify my previous point. I think it's important that anytime someone's going to apply for a position, whether we're going to pick and choose, and I know there's not picking and choosing, but this is this opportunity, and I, again, setting the precedence for future opportunities when we're transitioning people, whether someone did a good job or bad job. For the sake of being, of continuity, I think it's important that we post the job. They apply to the, doesn't mean we don't end up hiring that person because that even makes them more qualified because through the interview process, you find out, oh, you know the system, you've been using it here, you know all the internal players, that of course sets that person in a better position to receive the offer. But I think everyone, the job needs to be posted, the person has the opportunity, of course they have the upper hand. But I think that also gives you the opportunity, being in this position before, where you can say, this person didn't display the best, but these two people of a team of three, these two people did. And it's fair, and it's equal, and it's, I just think that that is, because that, it is common practice, it just seems like that would be the best course of action. If it's being offered to everyone, and in these cases, like inspectors and building officials, there's, you know, those are different. There's one role for one person or multiple roles, and there will also be other roles. So I understand there's still some leftover positions that'll be open even after those people come on board. So I understand that. I just hope in the future that that can be an opportunity. Also, I want to say, for the deputy mayor, these are the sorts of things we'd love to see at the subcommittee to pour over. I know this has happened after June 9th, but if these things do come ahead of time when we say, hey, are there other personnel matters, these are the ones we're hoping to talk about.
Councilwoman James.
Yeah, you know, excuse me if this is a simple question, but I'm kind of, you're asking for a budget amendment in that you're asking for IT, $25,700 additional dollars over what is currently being budgeted for this timeframe?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, I guess what I'm wondering is, was that budget so, that line item so tight that there wasn't that kind of monies in the line item that it would absorb it such that we, or would we have to, as a council, approve it even if the monies were in that line item?
So, I think a couple of things. One is, you know, the answer to your question is yes, that, you know, particularly in the IT, we did have, you know, itemized in terms of the professional services, primarily because before, all of the professional services was being used to fund that contract. We had taken that out of the budget, and there were only a few items that were left. And then on top of that, I think the, you know, the expectation was that we would come back to council once we had a sense of what those, you know, what those plans were going to be like in terms of the transition. So I think there were two, two things driving this. One is, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, that we did indeed need to do it. There weren't, there was not available funding in that category.
Okay. And would that be the same for the building department, the 293,000 in addition to what was already budgeted, you know, to cover through August?
Correct. And in part, given, you know, just given the amount, you know, we're talking nearly $300,000, so that certainly is something that we would need to move those monies into that account to cover.
Okay.
Thank you. With that, the speaker's list exhausted. Is there a motion to postpone this item for two weeks to the July 26th city council meeting?
Support.
It's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Rutherford, and the purpose of that is to allow for us to adhere to our ordinance and charter and all that fun stuff, so that way we're posting it so everyone can know about the budget amendment proposals, and that'll be back before us for further review. And we welcome additional information from the finance department and others that can help shape this decision.
Mr. President.
Clerk Doyle, you have the floor.
Yeah, just for clarity. So, the money is coming out of the general fund, or is it coming out for posting purposes? Or is it coming out of the salary and wages accounts?
So, the IT amount is coming out of the general fund, and then the building department, that's coming out of the building department, or the building inspection fund.
Okay. So it's not coming out of salary and wages? Okay.
And I think those GL account numbers spelled out in the earlier wherethes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any further clarity needed on the motion to postpone? Mayor Grimal?
Well, I don't know if this is an order, Mr. President, so feel free to slam your gavel down, but I note that we did have a question about this agenda item regarding ARP dollars, and I just want the person who posed that question to know that I plan to address that during my closing comments because I don't think it's directly relevant to this agenda item, which is about our IT services for the city. But I will be talking about it under public comment, or under my closing comments, I should say.
Thank you for that. Hearing no further discussion or clarification needed, we move now into the roll call on the motion to postpone to the July 26th meeting, this item before us. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
The motion carries, it'll be back before us in two weeks. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city to exercise its right of first refusal to purchase nine properties from the Oakland County tax foreclosure list for $16,434.42 from the land purchase fund?
Make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Carrington. That motion is now before us. Want to give the administration the opportunity for the first information, and we can read the resolution, relevant portions as needed as well, if we want to elaborate further. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Just for the public's information and background, and the council has this in your packet, every year of the county treasurer's office forecloses on properties if taxes have not been paid on those properties for three years. And as part of that, each municipality in the county has the right to, before those properties go to auction, to buy any of those properties that the municipality chooses to purchase for the amount of back taxes plus interest and fees. And so that is what this motion would do, is authorize the city to purchase nine of those properties. There are over 200 properties in the city of Pontiac that are going through or have gone through tax foreclosure. We're simply asking council to approve the purchase by the city for nine of those properties. The remainder of all of those properties will go to a tax foreclosure auction where any member of the public can bid on those properties. We put quite a bit of thought into whether we should buy any properties, and if so, what properties, because as we've discussed in the past, the city already owns six or 700 properties, small parcels, most of which the city has acquired through many years of tax foreclosure purchases using the city's right of first refusal. And as we've also discussed, the expense of maintaining those properties, just in terms of mowing the grass on those properties, is quite substantial. So we tried to be very judicious in what properties we decided to purchase. I am going to allow Deputy Mayor Stevens to get into those details. As we've discussed, you know, the goal is not for the city to own these properties forever and ever, but rather to be strategic in what properties we acquire with an eye towards ultimately having private folks redevelop these properties. And that's why, as we've discussed in the past, we're also working on a policy about what the process should be in terms of selling or disposing of the existing properties that the city has. And without further ado, I'll allow Deputy Mayor Stevens to talk about the rationale behind acquiring the nine properties that we're recommending we acquire.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I address that directly, one of the members in the audience asked about the Oakland County Auction. The Oakland County Auction can be accessed at oakgov.com/treasurer. That's O-A-K-G-O-V dot com slash T-R-E-A-S-U-R-E-R. When you go to that website, you can then click on the Oakland County Auction to be able to participate and purchase any of the properties throughout Oakland County, not just the city of Pontiac, for which municipalities have not chosen to exercise their first right of refusal. The properties that we are suggesting to the city council to pick up, there are nine properties. They fall into two categories. Seven of the properties are properties which do not have a claim against them, and that's just a fancy way of saying, seven of the properties are completely up in the air and all we have to do is pay the back taxes and fees. Two of the properties have a claim against them, which means that the owners of the property, or some, someone in the chain of ownership of the property has indicated to Oakland County that they do not wish for this property to go up for tax foreclosure, and they would like to try and salvage it, which means then that instead of paying the back taxes and fees, we would pay twice the assessed value, which ironically comes out to be close to what the back taxes and fees would have ended up being. And so I will give you the rationale behind, it's also spelled out in the resolution, but the rationale behind why we are asking the city council to pick up these particular parcels. Three of the parcels are adjacent to Oak Hill Cemetery. Picking up those parcels would allow us to expand the cemetery and therefore expand the economic value of the cemetery itself. We can do more burials. Two of the properties are adjacent to a property which the city already owns off of Pike Street. That city that the, that property that the city already owns is landlocked. Acquiring these two properties will actually make the property no longer be landlocked, and it could actually be used as what is commonly referred to as a pocket park. So it would be right off of Pike Street and be now accessible for everyone, and you would not have to traipse through people's backyards to get to this publicly-owned property. One of the parcels is adjacent to Crystal Lake Park, and so then that would make Crystal Lake, that would actually allow us to expand Crystal Lake Park. And then three of the properties are in downtown, and acquiring these properties would allow the city to have more control, have more active control over how downtown is eventually redeveloped.
And to clarify, these are all vacant?
These are all vacant parcels. They do not have any structures on them.
Thank you. Discussion from the council. Councilman Rutherford, you have the floor.
I think it's most important about the Crystal Lake situation, especially what is being proposed, so I really fully support that, as well as with downtown, with the rezoning, the redevelopment of the Loop, I think this is vital for us to do, so you have my full support.
For the community's benefit, can you share what section of Oak Hill we're talking about? Do we mean near Oak Hill Street?
Yeah, so actually, Oak Hill Street, exactly. That is, right where it is, is at Oak Hill and Paddock.
Okay. And then the parcels on Pike, what's the nearest cross street, if you have that handy?
Ooh.
In the meantime, other discussion? Pro Tem Carrington, then Councilman Parker?
Yeah, just one quick question, and this is for the administration. Mayor Grimal, you mentioned that the city owns over 600 pieces of property in the city of Pontiac.
That's right. We had a conversation about this, I think, at last council meeting, and that's correct. It's over 600. I don't have the exact figure at my fingertips, and it's very expensive, in excess of $20,000 a month, just to mow the grass on those properties.
And is it possible that you can send that list to, for our subcommittee meeting for next?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Councilman Parker?
Yeah. Thank you, sir. I just have a quick question. Is the two properties that's on Pike Street, will they be, have anything to do with the planned renovation of the Clinton River Trail, and would that fall into that?
No, they are not adjacent to the Clinton River Trail. And to further answer the question, they are north of Pike Street between Astor and Midland.
Just...
Mayor Grimal?
Well, just to clarify, I think the question Pastor Councilman Parker was asking is, are they going to be adjacent to the Clinton River Trail connector along Pike Street? And the answer to that is yes. I believe one of the parcels will make the existing city-owned parcel not landlocked by extending that access down to Pike Street. So it will be adjacent to the north side of Pike Street, which will be ultimately part of the Clinton River Trail connector.
Thank you. Thank you for the geographic context. Councilman James, and then Councilman Rutherford.
Yes, I just want to say, I don't know when we have last used the right to, the right of first refusal, but I think it's a great, you know, the thoughtful selection of these parcels is a great move, and applaud the city on, and taking the time, actually, to go through and make these calls.
Councilman Rutherford, and then Councilman Nicholson?
Yes, Mayor Grimal, just for clarity about the list of the, you said 700 last week when you announced it, but, and I just wanted to know, do you guys still keep that list of people who've been signing up to buy lots that are adjacent to their land? Because the reason why I'm asking, there's a lot of people in my district that have been waiting years to buy these lots that we own, and they were told they're on a list that is kept by someone in your office, and I just want to make sure that list still exists, that it's still active, and that they will have the first opportunity to buy those lots. Because some of them are actually maintaining them even though they don't own them.
Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Sorry, President. We certainly have been keeping track of contacts that we've gotten since January. I can't for certain say whether or not we still have a list of people who have expressed interest before we took office. But most importantly, once we put the policy in place, we will be getting the word out about that policy and certainly invite all community members to express interest as appropriate.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilman Nicholson, I apologize.
I want to reflect on the fact that in years gone by, the Oakland County Tax Foreclosure Auction used to have a completely separate event for just Pontiac because there were so many parcels in Pontiac that were, that they had to deal with during this time. And now that has all been, prior to it going online, it was all combined. So I know over the last, you know, economies, you know, coming back into where they need to be from the housing market, but also, you know, the good work that's gone on over the last many years in taking down blighted structures and making the city more appealing. So that has certainly been actualized. So I know a lot of those parcels then came into our possession, and we're looking at a few more. I'm hoping that some of these opportunities, while there's clearly some uses right away, but, you know, when we have these opportunities like, you know, the Murray Street options in our downtown, that these could be sites for redevelopment-ready, you know, proposals. Because I know we're doing that at the same time, and we're going to be looking targeted, you know, where are these spots in our town that we want to highlight? You know, I think we did a good job in looking through the map this year and finding the exact right opportunities, and I think you maybe even went a little bit easy on us, knowing that these are just the vacant lots that are adjacent to, and so I... that are adjacent to, and so I think these are the prime of the prime and I appreciate the hard work.
Councilman James, Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Just wondering, where are we going to take these funds out? Are they coming out of the general fund?
Deputy Mayor Stevens.
So I will say that it is essentially an arm of the general fund. There's actually a fund for land purchasing there coming out of that fund.
Okay.
You have the floor, Deputy Mayor.
I have the floor. Just to Councilman Nicholson's point, we actually really labored over the map. So what we did was, when we got the list of properties from Oakland County, we put them on a map to compare them to all of the properties that the city currently owned and all of the properties that were currently owned by other governmental institutions to determine if there were clusters of land where it made sense for us to pick up that property to actually try and be the catalyst for larger development projects. And ultimately, we determined that this was just not the time, that those opportunities were not there. But we did consider that prospect.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Hearing no further discussion, the speaker's list is exhausted. We now move, hearing no motions. We have the motion before us to adopt the resolution to authorize the city to exercise its right of first refusal to purchase nine properties from the Oakland County Tax Foreclosure List for an amount of $16,434.42 from the Land Purchase Fund. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six J's, no names.
That motion carries. We are now at public comment. Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Mr. George Marshall Jr.
To distinguish counsel, my name is George Henry Marshall Jr. I'm a resident of the city of Pontiac and have been for quite some time. My brother was Pastor Drew Marshall of Trinity, is no longer with us. My sister, the principal at Franklin Elementary School. My brother Larry, no longer with us, who was over Human Resources here at the city. My nephew over here. Of course, I don't know if that's going to limit his success in his position by being related to me or not, but he is. And I'm not bragging, but I'm just saying that to say that the Marshall family has been a resident of the city of Pontiac for a very, very long time and very active. And we do love the city. I'm saying that so that, that you'll know there's no hitting agendas or anything into what I'm getting ready to say. I've been recently became made aware of a charity called the RIP, which stands for Rest in Peace Medical Debt. And what this company does, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but every state in the country has an accumulated debt. People's medical expenses have gone to collection that they're responsible for paying, which is damaging their credit status and making it hard for them to exist. In the state of Michigan, we're currently at $40 million. Now Wayne County is 30,000, Oakland County 5,300, Macomb 3,300 and Washington R. 365,000. Now the total is $40,000. Now what this charity does, it pays 100%. If you were to give a dollar to this charity, they match it by $100. So your dollar's worth $100. So Michigan, if this charity that my church is working with right now was to raise $40,000, that would cover Michigan's debt. Now the United Churches of Christ, which has about 123 of them in Michigan, are currently working together. We've kind of networked, so then sending letters out to the council and everything. But we also just want to make other organizations, city of Pontiac and whomever we can educate in regards to this charity. It's Biz Stone, who was the, one of the founders of Twitter, a charity navigator, has ranked this charity at 100% successful in its efforts to do these things. The New York Times, HBO's last week with John Oliver, NBC Universal and a host of other countries that are credited, support the legitimacy of this charity. Just wanted to read quickly, let me read this really quickly from, "A medical debt devastates American families. Nearly 40% of American households have outstanding medical debt or problems paying medical bills. And the last year alone, approximately 75 million people have had to choose between medical bills and basics like food and hearing and housing." Now how they do it? RIP uses precise data analytics to pinpoint the medical debt portfolios of those most in need of relief. Households that are below twice the federal poverty level or going through hardship, RIP purchases these oppressive debts at significantly reduced rates.
That does conclude your time, Mr. Marshall. But is there any final announcement?
Yes, what I would like to just say is that this is a website you can go on. People are watching this, I guess. That to, if you need more information or how to give, we greatly appreciate it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, I stayed around because in the two minutes of agenda address to talk about the, hopefully what you'll have is a strategic discussion about how to expend the American Rescue Plan funds. There were a couple of points I didn't have time to make, so I just stayed around to do that. One of the things that, when we got this money and knew it was going to be awarded, we, in fact, there's $19 million, as I said, already has been in our treasury for a year. And we should just get this in the hands of people who need it because there's so many people who are still behind because of the pandemic. So many businesses that were still struggling that weren't eligible to get that first aliquot of money that came from the CARES Act. So they've been waiting also. We hear about seniors, you know, no longer have the money from OSHA to get help with their yard care, you know, grass cutting. These are the kinds of things that can come out of the American Rescue Plan to help citizens, which is their money now. You had asked Minister Kathleen James about the previous town halls we had, because we did have a number of town halls, and where was the information and the ideas that came out of that? And as I thought about it, Alexander Borngesser should have the slide decks for those. So if you ask her, she can give you that. Because there were a number of great ideas that came out. And the number, in addition to the ones I mentioned, such as helping to rebuild our neighborhoods by giving grants to private citizens, especially those of the right income level, so that they can go ahead and get roofs on their houses and things like that. So many repairs that need to be done, that people may not have the access to monies to do that right now. And then so many small businesses weren't eligible for the CARES Act money that came out because you had to have five or more employees. And 40% of the small businesses in Pontiac have less than five employees. So they weren't eligible to get that money, but they are, they could be eligible through ARP. In addition to the infrastructure to make us a smart city, which would be really transformational, there were other groups who spoke to these town halls. And one was Habitat for Humanity, which is great for helping people repair their houses as well as Central Multicultural, which you all know about. So those are the things I wanted to mention to you. And there's additional information. I was on the, I'm a guest commentator on the Mark Lee's Radio Show, which was on this past Sunday. That's on my Facebook page because I did talk about the way communities are spending this money to be transformational. And there was somebody who had a question about the $10 million being added to the, to correct the deficit. That is on your revenue page, item 101 000528 000. The grants that we got last year, $5.8 million for the CARES Act, was used to help with rental and mortgage assistance for those who needed it. So let's spend this money ARP usefully for our citizens who need it.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman. Mr. Bill Maxie.
Good evening, Mrs. and Mrs. Park, and especially to my 8,000 senior citizens of this city, particularly tonight. Landlord abuse. Landlord abuse. I have several cases in my office where landlord has number one, and we'll give you three examples. Had one of our people move to a new location and did not lock the building, did not put any board on it, and the tenant, some of their merchandise were missing. Number one, that's what's happening. Number two, a mother and her three kids were told they had to move out because we have to paint. They intended to move them into a new apartment, but the apartment was a kitchen. The apartment was a kitchen. And thirdly, most of all, our landlords are not giving information to Bill Maxie, whereas when I pay my $1,000 fee, it goes to the state of Michigan or either to an institution. Whereas if you don't repair my home, I mean, if you don't repair the roof, whatever's wrong, you can get the money. It's a lot of information missing. I have documentation, especially from the police chief, not police, but the fire chief and Rutherford, who had to secure the property. Last but not least, thank you, Mr. Mayor. He said one thing to me, let me know, I'll see what I can do. And what has happened? Code enforcement has been very, very corporative. I found out a lot of things. On top of that, you know, we have a lot of resource. We are committed to urban lead, Michigan Senior Citizen Employment, Michigan Senior Citizen Advocacy Agency, area-owned agent. Landlords, hang it up. You will not continue to misuse and abuse our seniors any longer. We personally have a meeting with the Attorney General. After all, I told you last week, I think, or two weeks ago, 74,000 complaints on senior abuse. It's true, Pontiac don't have any 70,000 complaints, but stop landlords. And next week, guess what? No, by Monday, Mr. Mayor, I'll have that documentation in your office and necessarily notarized from the citizens who has these complaint. Proof is in the pudding. I do dot my i's and cross my t's. I am fed up with the abuse of our seniors to our landlords. And next week, I'm going to have three of them and tell you who they are and what they rent. This should not be happening to a quality of life for our seniors, 8,000. I'm Chair President of the Committee in Lansing and Robert Bass and Thomas, other two. Hey, landlords, hang it up. Because we're going to continue with the office of the mayor and with code enforcement downtown. And by the way, thank you, Councilman. I was down to code enforcement three or four times and I ran into you. So I'm telling the rest of you, look, 8,000, we're responsible across all seven districts. I will not choose a district. If anyone call me, which they do, I take the information and I use protocol and I use documentation.
That does conclude your time.
I don't play it, I don't fat mouth. So take that to heart, whatever. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I will have that in your office Monday. If I have to, I'll have it notarized, it will be. Thank you for your time, the minute extra. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Darlene Clark?
Again, he's talking, we're talking about these property owners as well as these landlords. But first, we have a property on Franklin Road. And I stress Franklin Road for a reason. Once again, over 1,000 people traffic coming through Franklin Road a day. You have a property right across the street from that store on the corner of Luther and Franklin. It's owned by a Thia Dumas, D-U-M-A-S. She stay at 1163 Fairway in Pontiac. She put no trespassing sign on that property, but the reason she did that is because she's infringing on the rights of the neighbors within the neighborhood. She cut the center of the grass, but she didn't go around the fence which caused the weeds and bushes to grow up. You have a property at 404 Franklin Road. She cuts half the grass. According to her, the city owns the other half. The grass is over eight inches long. Then you have the property that's owned by the city in Pontiac on the corner of Montana facing Franklin. Oh my God, it's unbearable. It's really unbearable. You can't even see. And the reason I'm stressing all these avenues, once again, driving down Franklin Road on that street, that's the first thing you're looking at. You got that apartment building over there with vacant cars over there. The trees and shrubs is growing up, it's terrible. Then you have, and I have pictures of that as well. All these pictures were submitted in the last administration through code enforcement. You're only putting advantage when you allow them to cut the center. Pontiac residents' homes are not the fault because of debris and the weeds and the trees that's touching the wires. Those are the property's owner's responsibility. I asked you so many times, please increase the fines. Do whatever you have to do to make these people realize that we are not the dumping ground to bring all this crime in here. This is what's attracting crime. It's an opportunity to get on property that no one's looking at, that we got to stop it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Billy Swizer. First, I want to tell every person in Pontiac to vote. You can go to the city clerk's office and get a ballot and you can fill it right out because it's one page. There's about 10 people that you can vote for. Come in, vote, turn it in. The next one, I want to thank the council for passing the reproductive rights proposals that you passed a couple of weeks ago. It's really difficult when you've lived through that age where you had reproductive rights and then you come to 2022 and some Supreme Court justices decide women and females. Because my thing is from eight to 58, you have reproduction going on in your body. And for whatever reason, we don't seem to understand that. Then I just find it strange that they only decided that they were going to hamper females. They weren't going to hamper males. Seems kind of, and that they're not going to take care of the kids once they get here. Because once they get here, the babies cannot take care of themselves. I'm going to also thank you, Michael McGinnis, because you was, Councilwoman James was saying something and she didn't complete her sentence. And then you came back and I was, as I was getting ready to say, ask a fan, and what was he saying? What was she saying? You came back and clarified it for me. So thanks a lot. People, make sure you vote. Take care.
Thank you, Ms. Swizer. Mr. Lawrence Jasper?
How you doing today, council? Mayor? A couple of different things we didn't get to discuss. Councilman Nicholson, you indicated audit foreclosure, was working through its process. I hope that they went over the promissory note issued on February 24th, where there's no payment to be made for an entire year, which is a million dollars. That was paid, according to the mayors in my conversation, that was paid to Stevens, which also happens to own PIP. And PIP is one of your stakeholders in the Global Settlement Agreement, along with Urban Development of Michigan, which by the way, has full control of the city through the Agreement for Sale and Purchase, which has two contracts, and the Parking Lease Agreement, which has multiple contracts and obligations to this city to raise funds through state, federal, MEDC, MDOT and anybody else they want, plus purchase properties that might be proficient for their developments and bring in development money through business operations to include the federal building. All these are all about not you, Mr. and Mrs. Taxpayer, which are supposedly the public's private partnership stakeholders. But see, your elected officials are the ones who take care of you. This city is in the crisis that it is not because of the emergency manager in 2010. He followed orders. That's what's his job. It was the politicians that were corrupt. That's what's his job. It was the politicians that were corrupt prior to that, representing the people from 2000, 2008, bankrupt Pontiac. And it was what happened between 2014 or 15 to 2022, the ex-Waterman, Mayor Waterman, and her hidden agenda through confidentiality agreements for the Global Settlement Agreement that allowed Stevens to be the buyer and the seller. Now, we want to also take into consideration a few other things, but all of this doesn't help the citizens. They're the stakeholders, and you guys are all responsible for those stakeholders, not about what you're doing. I'm a Samaritan. Someone asked me, why do I trust you, Larry Jasper? Because I'm a Samaritan. Something you ought to know, I wasn't supposed to be in this meeting today. Saturday night at 10:30, a car came at me at 70 miles an hour, purposely turned into me, and smashed my car with me and my wife and my daughter in it, put me into a side rail, and in a triple 360 spin. Ironically enough, there's two felonies now because the person who was in the car who purposely hit me after I missed him ran. And the person that was in the passenger seat refuses to say his name. This is the third accident I've had in six weeks since I've been bringing this to this, and I've been attacked for the last six months. My son was T-boned, my wife was T-boned, and my car was destroyed. And I was supposed to be dead, not alive, but I'm here now today telling you this stuff so you know. Samaritan looks after his neighbor. I live two miles from here. This city is my neighbor. The people in this city are my neighbors. And that's why I keep bringing this up to you, because the little cities would take care of all your problems in preference. Who's the preference for the city, for the jobs? I don't see that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. James Abish? And he's the last speaker on the public comment.
Mayor? Counsel? And citizens of Pontiac. In 1776, our forefathers set aside Independence Day, the documents of independence. I'm leaving you with this thought that this is why we have July 4th. This year is another year of independence. It's a document of independence they set forth by our forefathers. I hope you enjoyed the fireworks, but this is the reason we have this day. Happy birthday, America. Happy birthday, Pontiac. A day set forth by our forefathers. I can't believe this was done without the influence of people who believe that God is. I hope the citizens of Pontiac are listening to what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. President McGinnis concludes our public comment.
Thank you. We are now at Communications, City Council Communications. The 2022 City of Pontiac Pride and Beautification Award nominations are now available at Pontiac City Hall, in the council offices, or on the city website at the council webpage. Nominations are being accepted through August 16th. And for those water bill payers in the city of Pontiac, a copy of that nomination form is included in your water bill forthcoming. Elam Family and Friends Block Party, July 16th, from 11:00 to 7:00 p.m., held at 485 South Sanford. Pontiac Farmers Market, July 17th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., held at 11 North Saginaw in downtown Pontiac. New Springfield Missionary Baptist Church Vacation Bible School, July 19th, 20th, and 21st, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., held at 124 Prospect. New Springfield Missionary Baptist Church Annual Community Picnic, July 23rd, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m., held at 124 Prospect Street. Pontiac Transportation Museum has their Cruze and Clues, July 23rd, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at 250 West Pike Street. Oakland County's Historical Society has their 53rd Annual Summer Ice Cream Social, free and open to all, July 30th and 31st, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. each day, held at the Oakland History Center, 405 Caesar Chavez. Pontiac Transportation Museum has an open house during the Woodward Dream Cruise, August 20th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., 250 West Pike Street. Oak Hill Cemetery Walk is September 18th. Walking tours at 2:00, 3:00, and 4:00 p.m. held at Oak Hill Cemetery, 216 University Drive. Mayor, you're up.
Thank you, President McGinnis. A few upcoming events of note. Number one, we have a town hall forum this Thursday, July 14th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And again, that same day, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Bowen Center regarding the proposed reconfiguration of the downtown Woodward Loop. This would be an MDOT project, and we want to hear from community members about your thoughts, your questions, your concerns, your suggestions. There'll be, again, there are two sessions this Thursday, July 14th. One from 1:00 in the afternoon to 3:00 in the afternoon. And again, that same day, from 5:00 to 7:00 in the evening. MDOT will give a presentation about the project, and then we'll open it up for public comment, questions, concerns, and suggestions. We have another town hall the following week, Wednesday, July 20th, also at the Bowen Center. And that is about the proposed development at the old Lakeside Project site on the shores of Crystal Lake. That is, that Wednesday, July 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the evening at the Bowen Center. Also, the Pontiac Arts Crawl is coming up, not this Friday, but the following Friday, July 22nd, right in downtown Pontiac, from 3:00 in the afternoon to 10:00 in the evening. We'll have lots of entertainment. It's a fun event. We look forward to having folks come out and joining us for that. President McGinnis made mention of this earlier, but again, August 3rd is the next Pontiac Planning Commission meeting, right here in city council chambers at 6:00 p.m. on August 3rd. We've mentioned this a number of times, but I want to mention it again. Our Pontiac Youth Recreation Program is off and running. We are now up over 750 enrollees in terms of Pontiac young people who are enrolled in our Pontiac Youth Recreation Program this summer. But if you know of a young person who would like to enroll, it is not too late. They can enroll by going to pontiacrecreation.reckdesk.com. That's pontiacrecreation.reckdesk.com. Or by calling 248-758-3037, 248-758-3037. So if you have a young person in your family or in a neighbor's family or friend's family, that's how they can enroll in the Summer Youth Rec Program. We had a great brunch and community conversations with the mayor this past Saturday. Many thanks to everyone who showed out for that event. But we have three upcoming events, and we'd love to have folks come out to them. The next one is August 6th, Saturday, August 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Pontiac Kappa House at 200 Earlmore. We also have one coming up in September, on September 10th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Ruth Peterson Senior Center. And then we have one on October 8th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Bowen's Center. Lots of free food at these, but most importantly, it's an opportunity for members of the community to come by, ask whatever questions you want of me, make suggestions. It's just an open, free-flowing, informal conversation. Come as you are, dress however you'd like. Free food, robust brunch food, and again, an opportunity to dialogue with me without making an appointment and with just it being a very informal, free-flowing conversation. Hope to see you there.
Mayor Grimal, do you feel comfortable sharing out with the community your state-of-the-city address?
Yes, as a matter of fact. Thank you for the reminder.
Formal agenda for the future few weeks, but I thought it might be helpful for the community.
So my state-of-the-city address will be on August 5th. I was planning to wait until next week to announce it, but it will be on Friday, August 5th. And so details will be forthcoming, but mark your calendars for the afternoon, evening of Friday, August 5th, which will be when I deliver my state-of-the-city address. Again, we'll have more information regarding the specific location and regarding the very specific timeframe, but save the date now for the late afternoon and evening of Friday, August 5th, for my state-of-the-city address.
And company, once a year, state-of-the-city addresses will you be giving this calendar year?
Just, just one, as had been customary before the previous administration last year. We will be returning to past practice before the past calendar year with just one state-of-the-city address per year.
Understood. As prescribed by the city charter. Thank you for fulfilling that charter duty. And then next week and in future weeks, more details forthcoming, but I just wanted to, if you felt comfortable, share that information. Thank you. We move now to closing comments. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. Just a few things. One is, I know that members of the public may be wondering a little bit about what a regular member of the public has been speaking to when it comes to the Phoenix Center here in the city. I just want to note, and we've talked about it at past council meetings, but I do just want to note that all of those comments relate to a very complicated and convoluted deal that was entered into by the previous mayor and the previous city council regarding the Phoenix Center. It is a very problematic and flawed deal. It is a deal that I opposed at the time, that I continue to have very serious concerns about. It continues to cost the city substantial sums of money. I do note that we are contractually bound as a city because of the decisions by the previous administration and previous council to enter into that contract, and we intend to certainly abide by our contractual obligations under that deal. We will certainly look for opportunities to modify that arrangement or to, to the greatest extent of our ability, mitigate the city's obligations. And we will certainly look for every opportunity to hold the current owners of Ottawa Towers to make sure that they're fulfilling their obligations under the deal. But again, it's not a deal that I would have entered into. It's a very problematic deal. But again, we want to make sure that we're not inviting new litigation by violating our obligations under that deal. We want to minimize the city's litigation and liability and not increase it by doing anything that would invite new litigation against the city. That's number one. Number two, I do just want to correct some misinformation that was shared this evening by a member of the public. The, it's certainly true that the budget that has been approved by the city council and by our administration, our mayoral administration, that went into effect July 1st, will spend about three point, is projected to spend anyway, about $3.8 million more than it will take in in the form of revenue. We're very fortunate that we have a very substantial fund balance that can cover that amount. But I want to correct misinformation because it was said that that $3.8 million difference is after taking in $10 million in ARP funding. That is not the case. In fact, if you take into account that $10 million of ARP funding, the city is projected to run a $6.2 million surplus. So I just want to be clear about that. That projected $3.8 million year-to-year deficit is before taking into account the $10 million of ARP funding. If that funding is taken into account, we will be projected to have a $6.2 million surplus. Furthermore, speaking of ARP dollars, I want to speak to that briefly because I know that there's been a lot of anticipation about the opportunities that these tens of millions of ARP dollars from the federal government present to our city. It is, in fact, a very exciting opportunity for us now that we're through the budget process and have approved the regular budget for this fiscal year. We have started the conversations in the mayor's office about possibilities about how we might propose spending those funds. We have some general ideas. We are waiting until we hire the new positions created in the city's Grants Management Department before we come before council with some proposals and ideas for their approval. As folks know, the budget for this current fiscal year adds staff people to the Grants Management Department. It's that department that will be responsible for administering those ARP dollars. There are four positions that have been created that need to be filled. We're in the process of seeking to fill those positions. Those positions have been posted, and we've started accepting applications into those positions. Once we fill out, the Grants Management Department will be bringing forward a proposal to council about how we might start utilizing those ARP dollars in a way that benefits the city long term. Those are one-time dollars, so we need to be very responsible stewards of how we spend it because these are not coming year after year. This is one-time funding, and we need to make sure that we're getting long-term bang for the buck as we invest those dollars in ways that will pay dividends for our city and its residents for decades to come. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Clerk Doyle, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I'll be brief. As a member of the public has already mentioned, voting for the August 2nd primary election is occurring. You can vote in person in the clerk's office. You can get your absentee ballot now, anytime, until August 1st at 4:00 p.m. Thank you.
Councilman Melanie Rutherford, you have the floor for your comments.
We change people through conversation and not censorship. That was said by the GOAT, the great Jay-Z. Conversations is the only way we can change the city of Pontiac, and we have to regulate and think about what we say in these conversations. For example, if you sue the city several times, you can't expect for me to have a conversation with you because you sued the city I represent several times. I'm just not going to talk to you. I represent the city of Pontiac, not Melanie Rutherford, although sometimes I mistake the two when they get in between. At the end of the day, conversations is what changes Pontiac, not censorship. I use that again in another way. If I have a problem with something, I have to be, have the courage to have the right conversation, not based on what I want for me, but what I want for we. So if it's an issue with code enforcement, and I'm here every day during my breaks, I call, I can't change it if you won't have a conversation with me. I can complain with the best of them. In fact, I'm really good at complaining. But what I am learning through therapy and meditation and real grown folks' conversations is that I can get more done if I have those hard ones, those uncomfortable ones, those ones that don't make me feel like I have it all together. If we truly want to see the city of Pontiac rise to the occasion, we have to have conversations. Number two, my district one meeting is July 30th. It's going to be at the Alley Cat. 11 to 1. Going to have food, going to have great prizes, going to have great talks, because we going to have conversations. Number three, there's so many activities going on in Pontiac. So before you have those negative conversations, I want you to say something nice about the city you love because we cannot change this city when we don't know how to be the greatest ambassadors. And lastly, Mayor Grimal, you are up to 99%. I'll tell you why. On Sunday, I had the opportunity to just chill with the mayor, nobody in front of us, me and his mama, and we was under the tent, and to see how he operates when no one else is watching is amazing to me. That is what leadership is. We have a disagreement, and I get on his nerves. We have conversations, and we laugh about it, but we get the We have conversations, and we laugh about it, but we get the business done. And I say this, everybody on this diocese wants to have real conversations with people. We don't want to argue, we don't want to fight, we just want to get the job done. If I said something to offend you, guess what? We can have a what? Conversation. And on that note, have a good evening.
Thank you. Councilman Brett Nicholson, representing District 2.
I had a very exciting week this week. The governor came to my small business in downtown Pontiac. She chose on her, after, right before grilling with Gretchen to stop by the Liberty Bar, and I chose my 12 minutes that I got to speak with Gretchen Whitmer about the park in District 2, about Indian Village Park. Many know this, that Esther Whitmer, her grandmother, lived on the edge of Indian Village Park. And over the years, the, she was actually called the Flower Lady, and over the years, those flowers have gone away, and the bushes are overgrown, and the play structures are not what they used to be. And I told her she would, she would, she, your grandmother would be really upset to see this park today. And she told me, here's this card, reach out to this guy named Jack. My dad would love to make a contribution to the city of Pontiac to make sure that this park is restored to what my grandmother would see fit. She asked me what a meaningful gift would be. And I gave her a really big number, and she didn't flinch, and she said, gives a call, so I will be working with Alex, Alexandra Born-Gaster, to make sure that Indian Village Park has that opportunity, combined with some of those community dollars that we've already have some projects slated for that park. So I'm really excited to see something really meaningful happen there. You know, this is a park that is really at the mouth of one of our historic districts, but it's also right on a freeway. So, and there's play structures there. So we really need to make this park child-friendly, family-friendly. It's a major thoroughfare, and some of our cleanups, we found some really dangerous items in the park as we've been cleaning up, so we have to figure out ways to make it more community-friendly, and we have the right people and resources to be able to now make that a reality. So I'm really excited to move forward with something meaningful there. On the other side of District 2, I know we've had many conversations about improvements for Bodat Park, especially the waterfront. I want to say again, I will take the week off of work and grab my shovel and hammer and paint. I'll be there. All of the neighbors I know in the Mill Dam neighborhood are ready to go, so much so that they're calling me almost every other day to say, hey, when are we going to get started? So as soon as you're ready, administration, we're ready. We really want to get those things moving and get them done, because they're all excited to see that happen. District 2's council advisory meeting, we're back at Goldner Walsh now, 4th Monday of every month, 7:00 p.m. Come see us. We are in the Bocchi Ball Courts now, so when you come in to the building, go all the way to the back, you'll see us there on the left. That group continues to grow. We have an amazing group of people that are really passionate about our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Councilman William Parker, again, in his absence, Councilman Mikhail Goodman is in Washington, D.C. right now at the White House with the president and members of Congress, and rocking and rolling. And Councilman William Parker, no, we're at 4, number 4, that's the ticket. Councilman Kathie Lee James, your closing comments, ma'am.
Okay. Tonight, I want to make a comment about, someone talked about, why are we just looking at the dog ordinance, dangerous dog ordinance? And I want to just kind of reaffirm that we realize that we need to do some additional work, some of the public comments that we've had in regards to other kinds of animals that are being nuisance in our community. We will, we do need a wildlife, a nuisance wildlife ordinance, and that's kind of what these other animals are, would fall under. Pontiac has a huge population of wild turkeys. We have moles, we've got gophers, we've got raccoons, we've got all of these animals, you know, in a really nuisance volume. I mean, they are multiplying like mad, and they are becoming a public nuisance. So we need to develop a animal, wildlife nuisance ordinance that kind of begins to talk about these different animals, and going off of the state's determination, what can be trapped, what can be killed, what can be, you know. So we need an ordinance, and that is something that we will continue to work on. But what we did tonight, the dangerous dog ordinance was just one part of it, but we realized that we do need a nuisance wildlife ordinance as well. Also, the District 4 has published a newsletter that's going out to all District 4 residents that should be out, and I don't know if anyone has received theirs, but you will be receiving one within this week. District 4 Community Council Meeting is on the 3rd Thursday, July 21st, at 6:00 p.m. in the evening, and it is via Zoom, so if you want to, if you're a District 4 resident and you want to participate, please reach out to me. You can call me at 248-425-4663. You can email me at kjames@pontiac.mi.us, and I will send you the link that you can participate in our meeting. And that's it for tonight.
Thank you. Councilman William Parker Jr., District 5's representative.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Good afternoon and good evening, District 5 in the city of Pontiac. Just want to first thank Pastor Rodney Tarver for coming by and giving us our invocation. He had been previously scheduled, and he didn't make it, and he asked if he could come and share with us this evening, so I want to thank him for that. Again, I want to say a special thank you to the Special Olympics basketball team. It's just awesome when those who are challenged meet the challenge and excel at the challenge. I want to remind everybody and those who are in District 5 that Harrington Hills is having their subdivision sale Saturday, Sep, I'm sorry, Saturday, July 16th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. Again, Harrington Hills is having their subdivision sale Saturday, July 16th, at 9:00 a.m. CDC meeting will be July 14th, 6:00 p.m. in the Lions Den. Want to remind everybody that the Law and Culture Subcommittee will be meeting July 25th at 4:00 p.m. in the council conference room. And just as another announcement, the New Springfield Missionary Baptist Church is celebrating their 48th year anniversary. Want to thank the mayor for stopping in Sunday with us. We had a lovely time until he left. It seemed like he just took the spirit with him, but he going to bring it back next time. We're celebrating the next two Sundays at 11:00 a.m. at the New Springfield Missionary Baptist Church, 124 Prospect. Would love to see you all there to come help us celebrate our 48th year anniversary. And then I want to remind the administration that as we are talking about what's going on at Galloway Park, there's a lot of significant areas that need to be improved. The dock needs to be looked at and redone. There's some other challenges there, and I just look forward to working with you to get all of those things accomplished in a timely fashion, as well as some of the things as you go up Perry from Kettering to Walton. With that, I will say good evening and God bless.
Thank you. Council President Pro Tem William A. Carrington, representing District 6.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Good evening, everyone. Just want to make a couple of quick announcements. It's been a lot of talk concerning the North Paddock and Perry Road area. So it's a community cleanup, it's scheduled for August the 6th, 388 North Paddock Street. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and it's sponsored by the Pontiac Housing Commission and the Shepherd of the Lakes Lutheran Church. I'm hoping some of the community come out and assist this cleanup. I will be there with my gloves, rake, and anything that I can bring to the table, so please come out. Because I know there's been a lot of complaints from the podium, so now I'm asking you to come out and help the community that you say you want cleaned up. So we going to be there.
August 6th?
August the 6th, yes. At 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Perry and Paddock?
Perry and Paddock, yep. So if you come to 388 North Paddock Street.
388 North Paddock. And that's which two groups?
Pontiac Housing Commission and Shepherd of the Lakes Lutheran Church.
Got it. We'll add it to the communications. Thank you.
Also, I'd like to reinforce that this lawn cherry concert, please come out to Oakland Park at 500 East McConne featuring Kisma Jordan, Karema Jenkins, Da'us. This is going to be a great concert. These, these two ladies have some beautiful voices, so please come out and support. This last past week, it's been a lot on my mind concerning the racism, or the subject of racism, which I see in our society. And I just want to take a minute and just talk about that. To those that continue to sit quietly on their couches watching their soap operas, sporting events, or reality shows, actually stand up. We would continue to struggle with eradicating this phenomenon. So it's really up to us to have this sort of solidarity to stand when we see these racist acts, and we see anything that another citizen actually, whether it's someone that's talking about anyone in our community with any kind of acts that can be considered racist, or homophobic, or any of these things. We need to stand up. And it's a quote that I pulled by Fred Hampton, which he said, "We got to face the fact that some people say you fight fire best with fire, but we say you put fire out best with water." We say you don't fight racism with racism, but we going to fight racism with solidarity." And that's the only way that we can rid this country of this horrible sickness that we have when it comes to racism in our community. And if everybody continue to stay home, oh, it doesn't affect me, it's not happening in my community, it happens across all economic ladders, gender, sexual orientation, we have to stand up and be against it. And until that happens, we going to continue to have these horrible situations in our society where someone goes into a mall to start shooting people, or someone goes into our church and just start blasting people, or someone goes into a Jewish temple and start blasting. We got to, we really got to do, we got to help stop it. And it's very sick when I see this, and I want to close on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Mike McGinnis, District 7's representative. I do want to share, I am not an attorney. The highest education I received is a bachelor's degree from Oakland University, but so I do not have a law degree or am licensed to practice law. It's not shade, I just want to make sure people knew that, because I may look like an attorney, I might sound like an attorney. I might think like an attorney, but I, I am not one.
I took that as a compliment when it, when he.
All right, all right, we'll get back on track, but I just want to make sure everybody knows that, that I am, I am not a lawyer, or an attorney, or any other, a barrister, whatever they're called. I want to thank, well, before I forget, we did get a response from Ruth Peterson, Gladys Smith with their team, who shared that they have Senior Friendship Day, they're going down to Aretha Franklin Amphitheater in Detroit on July 19th, and also a field trip on July 28th to the Detroit Institute of Arts. Again, that's Thursday, July 28th. And they also have a Senior Resource Fair on July 22nd, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. with food trucks, snow cones, more, all free. And then this week, on Thursday and Friday, they have a garage sale. So a lot of action at Ruth Peterson Senior Center from the city of Pontiac, but we, earlier we're talking about youth, senior recreation, bus trips, July 19th, Senior Friendship Day to Detroit, and then July 28th, the Detroit Institute of Arts. You can contact the Ruth Peterson Center at 248-758-3277 to sign up or get more information from Gladys and the team at the Ruth Peterson Center. So thank you for that. Just very briefly, want to say thank you to the residents of District 7. We had a really meaningful and powerful Eastside Community Meeting yesterday. We meet the second Tuesday of every month, so the next meeting is August 15th, 7:00 p.m. at Prospect Missionary Baptist Church. Great turnout, and also, we dived into a lot of issues with neighborhoods and specific concerns they want to see addressed. But I did open the meeting with, what is something that has surprised you in a positive way about summer in Pontiac so far? And it was a really powerful conversation where people were saying pleasantly surprised that the neighborhoods have seemed safer and more quieter. Now, they weren't talking about fireworks, but they said that the neighborhoods, in terms of neighborhoods that have been a little bit more hot in terms of rowdiness or crime breaking out, that at least so far, knock on wood, and say a prayer, that the safer situation for the summer continues to hold. And so that's something in District 7 that we're cautiously optimistic about in terms of how summer's gone so far. They shared that the laughter of children at Murphy Park, since there's a lot of summer programming and the Friends of Murphy Park, that's been a real delight for summer. They have also provided a lot of positive feedback about their experiences with City Hall, that walking into City Hall, that it seems like city employees seem to not hate their life as much. So that is something that they said, this season, that they're just, you know, reading body language, reading, you know, sort of interaction, that it seems like there's a little bit improved morale at City Hall with city staff. And also, a few of our seniors who paid their, their summer tax bill in person at the city treasurer's office, they had a really, really positive experience. So Iris Brown, for example, was really complimentary of that experience with how friendly and helpful they were. So I just wanted to share that. Among many other feedback, they have found that if they're complaining about a pothole, a grass overgrown, a tree that needs to be cut, they're getting responsiveness. Now, it's not as fast as we'd all like it, but they're actually getting responses, they're getting them addressed, and that's something that's been a welcome change that the residents of District 7 has shared at our most recent meeting. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still move.
Or?
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Rutherford, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no discussion, roll call, Clark Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six J's.
That motion carries. We stand adjourned at 9:00 p.m.